Please put your phone on silence or vibrate please. And Jan is going to lead us into the class and Felix will read his statement.
The United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, the Constitution of our state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, now in the federal district, we educate every student, we avoid only murder in perpetrating integrity and possible contributors to society.
Thank you Felix, thank you Chair. And now Dr. Fernandez, please.
Yes, sir. The first report we have is our annual safety report. This is a public hearing before the board meeting. And our annual performance report comes out every year about this time. And there are five pieces to it. One piece is the financial standard report for eighteen, nineteen, district accreditation status for nineteen twenty, the violent criminal incidents for nineteen twenty, student performance in post-secondary institutions for twenty eighteen, and the Texas academic performance report for nineteen twenty. The report is quite lengthy, so we went through and pulled out the lead to speak. And we also have our Dean, Bill O'Pally, that can help with the specific questions regarding financial components or the active reporting components. So the first piece in terms of finance are, what you have is list all of our operating, revenues, expenditures, anything that has to do with running this school district. The key components I think are of note are fund balance, which I think our finance leader's done a very good job of maintaining a healthy fund balance. As you can see at the bottom, Phil President Ronald Ronald, but our eighteen nineteen core fund balance is fifteen million, eight versus nine dollars, forty-five dollars. Fund balance is usually something that, I said earlier, this later, a year or five years, the issue is always what do these school districts do with excess fund balances? So Phil has done a great job, has done a great job of managing our fund balance on the district. Our accreditation status is pretty straightforward. When we were last traded, we were a B for accountability, which means we were accredited, and a B standing. In terms of our violent criminal reports, we, if we had any incidents that happened on campus, per our students report nineteen twenty, we did not have any violent criminal incidents on campus. Our student performance in post-secondary institutions is one that most districts have a little challenge with. What that is, is our tracking students after they leave us, whether they go to four-year or two-year, or they go to workforce, independent colleges or universities. And we try to get a gauge of how students are doing once they leave us. It is a challenge because you have to constantly keep in communication with your kids and get updates from reports, and also rely on some of the universities sharing their information with us. So like most districts, you will see that the numbers there are like, oh, yeah, I know we have more students than that, they're doing great things. That is the truth. But we're still trying to find the best ways for them to connect back to us, give us some of that information as well as our university partners. In terms of our accountability rating, once again, we are not rated, or last year we were not rated, declared a state of disaster, obviously for COVID, so we take it back to our eighteen nineteen rating. For special education, in twenty twenty, we met all requirements. The next component of our district and our campus profile. So our star performance will remain the same until we get new ratings, new data, to judge our growth of students. And hopefully, Hallie Griffin from on late June should be getting, start getting some of that data, tricking that campus back today. And we will continue getting data from the state, hopefully by the end of the month. The other components that are built within there are all of our district profile and demographic information, the number of students, the number of staff, the education of staff members, the number of career technical students that are enrolled, our English language learners, our numbers of special education students, all of the district demographic information for our students and staff at the district that help us make decisions moving forward. Now, if we have our team here, the reports, I believe, plus two hundred pages long, if there's anything that we can answer for anyone who would like their questions now, before we jump into the record session. Not seeing any questions, so we'll move forward. So we have seven minutes vibrate, this will be the one to start.
Every morning is seven o'clock, it's time for us to start our regular board meeting. Thank you. Going to go into public comment, a regular board meetings will be conducted in accordance with BED local and the board's procedure on public comments at meetings other than regular board meetings, public comments are limited to items on the board meeting notice and agenda. Regular meetings, comments on other topics may be allowed as time permits. Public comments should be limited to topics relevant to district business. Complaints and concerns for which other resolution channels are provided shall be directed through those channels. Comments shall be heard at the beginning of the board meeting. Also, the board meeting encourages the comments about the district from members of the public. Anyone who has a sign up to speak in advance of the meeting, in accordance with the board procedures, may do so at this time. The board asks that each participant comments pertain to district business and to be no longer than five minutes. Mr. Patrick Hernandez will be taking the time. Due to large numbers of individuals wishing to speak, and in the interest of time, adjustments may be made to the public comment procedure. Remember, the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on the agenda. First one is Mr. Jesse Cepulantes.
Hey guys, just wanted to say thank you to you guys on board for approving the midway route for our athletes up at the high school. I gotta send you to that, it's amazing guys. I hope you guys continue to sponsor and support the student athletes. Thanks guys.
Janie Angiello.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Janie Angiello. I am a TM ISD taxpayer, a resident at this district since I was five, and a registered voter. I am not speaking for anyone but myself. Nobody has asked me to speak on my behalf. I am retired from Tulsa Midway High School after twenty-five years of service. I am a Tulsa Midway graduate. My husband is a Tulsa Midway graduate. My four children are Tulsa Midway graduates. My grandson is a Tulsa Midway graduate. My five siblings are Tulsa Midway graduates. I have a niece and a nephew who are Tulsa Midway graduates. And I have a granddaughter who will be a junior at TM High School in the fall. I am here as a concerned TM community resident and a highly concerned grandparent. I am angry. I am angry. In less than a year, Tulsa Midway ISD has imploded. Teacher concerns, morale, and loyalty do not seem to be an area of concern to the TM ISD administration, starting from the top. I am sure you are all aware there has been a mass exodus at TM ISD. My God, over a hundred qualified, tenured, tenured teachers, highly skilled staff are gone. How can they be replaced? With who? Not experienced, first year teachers, straight out of college, or bottom of the barrel teachers that can't be hired at other districts? I'm so sad for my soon-to-be junior granddaughter. She will be cheated out of the awesome, passionate instruction from Mrs. Gwynetta Hillshire, AP English, and Mrs. Yvonne Chaveta, AP US History. Thirty-one years at Tulsa Midway. I am everywhere. I'm at football games, I'm at softball games, volleyball, swimming, basketball, theater. I have not been a stranger to TM just because I am retired. And the loss of the high school registrar at this time of the year is the most, that is the most crucial time because all the information from the school's year and accomplishments are submitted at this time to TDA for the school's report card. I know I've been there, I've done this job, and I know how crucial that is. And I feel for the registrar that is there now who has no clue about how to finish a school year. I am here to tell you that as a community member, I am hearing from other concerned community members and parents. I hear that there is a racial divide among the board, that there is a gatekeeper to the superintendent, that there's a good old boys Hispanic wall. I am Hispanic, and I am absolutely appalled to even hear that this is possible. And it's disappointing. It's very disappointing. I've been in this district all my life and there has never been a racial divide. If there is a racial divide, if there is a gatekeeper, stop it. Stop it. You do not represent yourselves. You are decision makers to act in the best interest of our students. What's done and damaged is done. Fix this. Quit coming out of your closed sessions telling an overcrowded group waiting out in the boardroom, out of the boardroom, to just sit for two minutes to tell them, no action. It's not fair people. It's not fair to us as community members to these people that sit behind me who are teachers, who are staff members, who work for this district, who have not been here as, use TM as a stepping stone to the next place. These people have been here for years and years, and they should matter to you. They should matter to you because they're working with our kids, my grandkid. These teachers have taught my children and some of the board members' children as well. I want to remind you board members, you were not hired by TM. You were voted in by TM voters who selected you to act in the best interest of our children. You need to do that. You need to remember that when you go into your closed session and you discuss what has been brought to concern. On a personal note, what a great loss to this district, the retirement of my friend of thirty-two years and a forty-two-year educator. Not because she was planning to retire as part of the TM community professionals. What happens to one happens to all. Our great loss because she is TM's education encyclopedia, as I'm sure the interim high school principal has already realized. Her answer is to why now? She told me, I can't work like this. No trust is a real detriment to my work ethic. And one more thing, and I hate to do this. I haven't even decided right now whether I should. Dr. Fernandez, this is addressed to you. How do you sleep at night knowing that you destroyed one man's career and life? Remember, your kids will be attending TM schools.
Thank you. Rose Perez.
Good evening. I'm Rose Perez, and I think I've been before you more times in my year of retirement than I have my thirty-two years that I've worked here. It's difficult to address the board without knowing specifically the specifics of the agenda regarding grades, GPAs and such. I can only assume the issue at hand. All courses follow state, local, and legal board policy. Schools, students, parents, and outside organizations are guided by those policies. Trust the system. When courses are selected toward graduation is a family decision. And GPAs are a direct result of student performance. Student rank is based on that performance. As a side note, there are courses that can be taken that are not calculated in one's GPA. All students have the same opportunity to select courses. They have the same opportunity to make the highest grade in courses. Every one of you have or had a child in our schools. So are we to question your intentions? Trust, that's what's missing.
Kendy Gonzalez.
Cindy.
Cindy, Cindy. Cindy.
Members of the board, Dr. Fernandez and Dr. Wyatt, thank you for allowing me to express my concerns tonight. My name is Cindy Gonzalez. I am a TM alumni. I have three daughters, two of which have since graduated from TM. All three of my daughters were TM cheerleaders since seventh grade. All three have made varsity as freshmen. My youngest is still in high school. My middle daughter will start Taboo CC in the fall. My oldest daughter was in the top six percent of her class at TMHS. She graduated from the University of Texas at Austin in three years. She is starting law school at St. Mary's in two months. I say all this to let you know I am invested in our TM community. My family is invested in our TM community. I grew up here, I live here. My children are TM warriors for life. My husband and I have volunteered our time to TM ISD for seventeen consecutive years, consecutive. I come here tonight to voice my concerns regarding item seven on the agenda. My daughter, who will be a junior this upcoming school year, is one of TM's top students. I am very concerned about the current grading system, class ranking guidelines, GPA practices, and student core accessibility. My expectations for TM ISD are as follows. They're not hard, but I expect TM ISD to be totally transparent regarding district grading policies. I expect TM ISD to treat all students fairly. I expect TM ISD to treat all students equally. And lastly, I expect all TM ISD students to be provided an equal opportunity to succeed. TM ISD teachers, administrators, board members, and parents should want every single TM ISD student to succeed. TM ISD teachers, administrators, board members, and parents should not be able to decide who will be number one and who will be number two when it comes to class rankings. TM ISD teachers, administrators, board members, as well as parents, must be transparent, follow the rules, must be held accountable for all actions and decisions. I will close with this. Over the years, at one time or another, I have voted for each and every one of you on this board. Your actions tonight will determine my voting decisions at our next board elections. Thank you for your time.
Leo Gonzalez.
Evening. First of all, I thank you all for allowing me to speak this evening. I really appreciate everything. This might be a thankless job, but we sincerely thank you. I've volunteered myself in the district and I appreciate those assistance to the district. I'm here primarily again for, I have a number seven on the agenda. This has to do with the class rating, the gap ratio, the GPA, and access courses to students. My daughter is one of the top of the class. She's a junior this coming year, and so this is critical categories for her. And rumor mill, rumor mill, have it there, some students are afforded greater access to classes which may afford a GPA bolstering which other students may not have access. And sometimes rumor mill hits it right on, and sometimes it misses. So tonight, I'm hoping for some clarification as to how close it is or how accurate it is, right? I'd hate for my daughter to not have the opportunity to do the best that she could because she wasn't afforded the opportunity to take classes or, you know, do the best that she could because of the district. As a taxpayer, as the father of three who put my children through the school district, I expect the highest integrity, standards of integrity for our teachers, from our administrator, the student attendance office, and who's cool. My last one up here is, you guys are the last line of defense to implement and execute integrity in our school system. So really, it's up to you. I will count on you. So anyway, I'll be happy to find out more information as the night goes on. I'll be impressed with the settlement. I appreciate the time, just very thank you.
Arina Navara.
I want to bring up to the bottom, my future today has nothing to do with what's probably ahead of us, but this is the only way I knew how to present the issue then. If nobody's helped on my own. We were allowed to attend TM for a charter. My daughter was in the neighborhood. We have had a perfect reception here. It's been a wonderful experience. She has been invited to charter for next year. I'm here to plead with you, to please reconsider. It's been a horrible year. Kids have struggled to get her here, although her lucky daughter did. She's been an outstanding student, a great asset to the school, as well as the school and the neighborhood and the families, teachers, everybody has been wonderful. And I hate to take this away from her this late in her school years because of me. So I'm thinking that this reconsider.
Lauren Camara.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Camara. As my mother did say, I've been attending Tulsa Midway since my fifth grade year, where I actually helped contribute in creating the trust team, which I'm a lawyer, participate in because in the sixth grade, I joined speech and debate and theater, which I had quickly learned is my passion in life. And joining high school, I completely took my career to the next level with paying Rizzo in Greece as the only freshman need. I attended Thespian and was the only TM student to make it to nationals. Just this year, sophomore year alone, with attending the UT finals as a sophomore, I actually met all of you at a previous board meeting because I had qualified to UIL state in pros. And not only did I qualify to UIL state in pros, I actually became a UIL state champion with being a part of the UIL when I played cast, which actually I'm wearing the shirt right now because I wear TM with pride. I have been, I have been met with nothing but love and support by each and every one of you, especially when asking about Natasha Jones who are not here today, but this class means a lot to me. And it would be a disgrace to leave this late in my speech and debate career. With living in a glowing new household with a single mother who rates less than thirty thousand a year, who not only supports me, but my sister and my ninety-seven-year-old grandma. This is, my future is very important as the first in my family to attend a university. Continuing my education here is not only to make my family proud, but to make TM proud, to succeed. Each and every one of you and my predecessors are so. I please beg to please reconsider my transfer. Thank you. And I also like to say, this and all of this has been because of you, not because of me, but because of TM staff, taking care of their students. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Fernandez, we go. Dr. Fernandez, we go into our recognition portion, please.
Okay, first we have Ms. Lauter with our choir. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing some of our state qualifiers from this past school year. These students work extremely hard, just like everybody else on our campus, despite COVID, despite being online, learning music on their own, putting on virtual performances, trying to put on concerts. So tonight, I'd like to start off by recognizing some of our state qualifiers. Come on, handle this, yeah. Come on, guys. Don't be shy. Let's go. All right. First, we're going to start off with one of our solo state qualifiers, Mr. Aaron Martinez. Come on, Aaron. Next up, we have Ms. Gabriela Garza, another solo state qualifier. Ms. Isabel Tesada, another solo non-solo state qualifier. Morena Cantu, a TMA area qualifier and a state solo ensemble qualifier. Ms. Hazel Rubel, a state solo ensemble qualifier. Her sister, just graduated Jessica Rubel, another solo ensemble. Mr. Ryan McCully, one of our TMA all-staters for this school. Mr. Angel Sambival, another TMA all-stater for this past school year. Mr. Joshua Napo, another TMA all-state choir member and a solo and ensemble state qualifier. We have Caleb Martinez, another state solo and ensemble qualifier. And last but not least, Ms. Daniela Cano Lopez, another area qualifier and state solo and ensemble. Thank you, guys, so much for your continued support this year. Like I tell kids, I just play the notes for them and they're the ones that go out there and get the stuff done. So if you could please give them another round of applause.
Board members, if I can get you to take a picture with them real quick. So if you have to stand up, we'll put you on the top row to see. Okay, baby, y'all follow me this way. Okay. You go on the top. And then. Okay, Minjota, come step up a little bit. Step up. Step down, one more. Yeah. You're good, right there. Yeah, all of you. Yes, because the light is in your eyes. Okay, guys, I'll have you stay on the bottom row. Stand there. Stand in front of them. All right, here we go. Yes, one more, please. Everybody just scoot up a little bit. Dr. Fernandez, I need you on this side, please. Yeah, he's in the room. Okay, Ms. Lauren, if you'll step up next to Mr. Hush, real quick, please. Parents, if you, oh, let me take one real quick and then y'all can come. One, two, and three. Got it. Okay, wait for your parents. Give them just a second to take a picture real quick. Let me get out of the way. Okay, good job. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce you to Jose Sanchez. He's one of our welders in the high school welding program. And I wanted to recognize him for the job he did. We had a contest over at the Craft Training Center that was sponsored by the American Welding Society. And he was first place in the pipe welding division. He brought his pipe, had his trophy, and he won some other prizes and stuff. And I think it's, I want to recognize him. This is just his second year welding, so when you can weld like this, I can assure you that this young man is the best welder in South Texas and having here at Telosa. So sometimes God's gifts come. And that's what's cool about this program is that kids like this can come, he can graduate and go out and get a job and make a lot of money, more money than me, without any college debt. And I guess in a way, I want to recognize him, but also want to thank the school district for taking care of a program of this nature. A lot of places, things like this get slithered and arrive and become, you know, the hidden things, but this is a big thing for our high school and it's a big thing for our kids. It's the second year we've won the pipe welding in this contest. This year, we had a little tough time because of all the regulations and stuff. This was the only contest that really was held, so we had to go in there and make it count, and Jose did. Although I call him Pedro, and I don't know why I call him Pedro, but sometimes I call a kid a name and I just go with it if it fits. He never corrected me, that's the bad thing. So I'm constantly saying Pedro, it's the only thing, but his dad and his sister is here, and his sister came in and welded in our welding camp right after school was out. We spent four days with a welding camp, and she came in. She's going to out-welding by the time it's over. So anyway, thank you very much, and we appreciate all your support, and we're glad I watched you see Jose and recognize him for all of his work.
Okay, picture. Y'all know where to go.
We're going up.
Okay, we're going to have you. All right, baby, we're going to have y'all come this way, and then we're going to have you take a picture. Bring your trophy with you and your certificate, please. Congratulations. You're making grades over there. You got your trophy? All right, perfect. Here we go. Thank you. All right, congratulations.
Now we move into discussion action items, two items, uh, of Dr. Fernandez. The next item on the agenda is discussing the approval of the district improvement plan and the campus improvement plans, and this will be a joint effort. I'm always going to start a thought, and then our campus representatives are going to come up and go through their campus improvement plans.
Not for you, okay? Everything, I recognize two due or more approval, district and campus improvement plans, items for students in the district, and our local community in the campus. This is where our teachers, this process that our teachers daily, every year, we bring this forward to your people every single year after we work. A lot of work behind this, and there are gathering people, committees together, training, your job, and so it's information about the district. And the move forward to identify prioritized needs. What do we identify those needs? We did address the strategy inside of the effort itself, or the team's effort itself. What we found this year was that our conversations and our focus was very much, very different, very much related to the impact of COVID, whether it be culture, whether it be on destruction and learning, all kinds of areas that it would be found it impacted. So our focus became very much involved in five different areas. And we're going to continue to hear about these areas since there's some funding this coming up later that will be tied to this document, this compliance document. So in the presentation, we'll find that the five areas we're teaching, the impact of COVID on the learning, the impact of COVID on the social and emotional needs of our students, the impact in our community and family engagement, also our health and safety of our campuses and our district as a whole. So with teaching, we need to respond to the need there with some assessment determining where our kids are, what do we need to be focusing on, what type of intervention resources can we need? We need to be a little more innovative and look at how we can design some instruction intervention before during classes, school, perhaps even during inter sessions. Our classrooms have become very limited, and we continue supporting classrooms and teachers with resources and support, along with that becoming a lot of generous amount of professional development. There, learning, we have students that have gaps in loss or construction, missed opportunities, on both the side of a student that needs intervention but doesn't need to repair a gap, or on the side of where we have students that they have missed opportunities for enrichment. We will be addressing learning across all levels. We also need to return our students to school in more engaged way. We found COVID affected that very much, so we want to see our students' attendance improve. We also have other normal things that didn't, kind of a difficult way, we're still paying for those requirements and have co-3 and early literacy and math requirements for our K3 students. And of course, moving into making sure our special ed, special populations performance improves, along with the college-ready communicators. But what we have had more than anything this year is a very large impact on the social and emotional needs of our students. We need to bring in and build in more support for our students through, whether it be LSP, you know, virtual counseling, whatever we might need to do to better support our students in real time. And right now, we have to kind of push that out and help parents find those resources for their families, but what we can do is bring it into schools and provide in real time, whether it's in these workshops. So we want to provide those tools, not only through our houses, but our teachers. Those things happen, those things happen right inside of the classroom, we need to be ready to support that. And of course, we need to bring more student-centered focus and into that period of need. We also found that through COVID, our community engagement, the needs improvement, meaning we need to make sure that our families know, our parents understand what the needs of their students are, and when they help us do, we can help them do the support and the impactful improvement that they needed. It's going to be critical that our communication is healthy and it's timely to make sure that we bravely provide tools and resources and opportunities to fill those gaps and learning areas where we lost. Of course, we're going to have to maintain and continue to think about our health and safety. COVID hasn't got away. We have to be very proactive, making sure that we don't put our guard down and maintain safety and healthy facilities and practices, and we will do so. And we have to be very honest, the case of potential closure, we do not know, but if we don't continue to make sure we're ready, it's going to catch a self-guarding and that's what we want to do. From the district's point of view, these are those prioritized needs that the committee of teachers, specific staff members, directors, parents, we had a large number of parents joining the forum, and that was very appreciated and respected. These were those five areas, the very distinct strategy behind them from the district point of view, and they're going to hear these exact same things, and we have this group as well. It's kind of not even worked separately, but all of the campuses came with the same specific needs that you have, or that you have in your campus. The first campus will be the primary school.
Good evening. We are going to talk about the identified or prioritized needs of the primary campus. As Holly was explaining, we want to make sure that we take a look at the impact of COVID-19 on student learning. This means coming in and hearing their sessions, school, whatever we have to do to make sure that our students receive the resources that they need to make sure that COVID doesn't have that much of an impact on their learning. The big one at our campus is going to be social and emotional student support, and for this, we have really looked at the impact of our little ones at the campus level, and we want to make sure that we're addressing their needs and supporting them as needed. Strategic instructional focus and reading and math, this is something that you currently say over and over when I presented to you. Our focus, not only is reading and math to all our subjects, but more for us to use the hospital three goals, are going to have to continue our strategic instructional focus. Strategic planning, law subjects, that's the other part. Our campus is scheduled to be creative. We have that win in intervention time, so that's a big part of what we do at the primary campus, which is what I intend, so that's what we're going to aim to target those gaps that the students have. Hospital three, that's the presentation I came to earlier to hear about. We do have those early literacy and math pools. Because of hospital three, we're also having to re-implement reading academies. We have about 15 teachers and administrators who have completed their reading academies this year or in the process of completing. They are over 60 hours of learning from TDA about the best practices of teaching reading. School-wide positive behavior system, we always had a positive behavior system that has always been a piece of, so now we want to try to find that and look at what exactly is that going to look like at the primary campus. Continuing with our library enhancement, we did that two years ago, last year we did some, but continuing our library enhancements to make reading and our library the fundamental area of our school, that everything revolves around reading, and start developing that culture of reading at the primary campus. And the last one that we have listed, our parent and community engagement, meaning that we are a title-one campus, that is a big component of being a title-one campus. We didn't get to do as much as we did wanted to this year, but we did do some virtual things, we brought in our speakers, and continue to give parents the tools that they need to help our students be successful. So this is some of many goals that we have at the primary campus, but we're really excited to get started on this work and maybe what we need. Some of the strategies, and I kind of already spoke about some of them, finding the social and emotional programs to support our student needs, increasing instructional focus during inter sessions to target learning and enrichment. We're not just going to focus on student gaps, but what can we do to promote students, whether it be STEM camp, STEM activities, robotics, whatever we can find to help promote the enrichment piece for students. Of course, implement research-based intervention strategies and programs. We're always looking for what can we do to enhance learning at our campus. We have been provided with the opportunity to collaborate with principals from around the state, and we're learning the new best practices through the principals academy that Dr. Fernandez put us through. Provide teachers with additional times and planned lessons, activities, interventions based on student needs and campus assessment. This means teachers providing them time, whether it be during the school day or during end sessions, to come in and plan and strategically look at our teach and where are we going to go moving forward. Focus and implement a balanced literacy, strategy to improve ability, fluency, and comprehension. This has been our focus, and we started this work two years ago. We're continuing the focus and making sure that our teachers have the resources and skill set to implement a research-based reading program at our campus. Professional development in the areas of reading and math, our teachers just attended a guided math training the last week, but they were off-campus, off of contract, so they are putting in the work to make sure that we do meet those goals. Instructional resources, we're always applying the resources to our teachers. Instructional math and reading coaches, that is going to be new to our campus. We're going to have a reading and math coach that still are going to be focusing on helping teachers refine their craft in the classroom, and do those best strategies for students. And the last one, providing parenting resources that support campus educational efforts. We need to get out into the community. We need to make sure that our parents and community members are a partner in the work that we're doing at the primary campus. Any questions? We have meetings monthly, so we're, and this is something that's continuously, we're looking at it. Now, we have to. Now, we have to be able to evaluate because we are a title campus. We have, that's part of it. If it's not working, then we go back and we do it. So, or we look at what the, how that strategy is working, what can we do differently? I will tell you that we, since I've been here, we've gone away with stuff that hadn't worked, but we have data to prove that. So we do, we're on, I have scheduled meetings monthly with my faculty staff, which consists of teachers, parents, and I am with me for a community member or two or more. Yes, that's something that has been a bit pushed, but because of COVID this year, we weren't able to. But last year, before COVID, we were actually wanting to, remember I said, push into the communities and work with those partners, whether it be Blue Black or the partner conferences or the Church on Main Drive. So making sure that we're not, we're not requiring parents to come to us, but we can take the resources to that. Amy, you were excited too, and I just want our, our parents and families to feel connected to the school. Kind of wanting us to be a doggone take your towel and spend it back with your dog. We are a true partner and that's what we're working for at the primary school. That's my friend.
That's him, which is going to be at school, Christina Gervino.
Right with the thunder, I'm part of the tourney that you're attending this. Well, you're pretty successful on what Polly said and also what this guy was saying. This guy and I, we've partnered together on a lot of our instructional practices. It just makes sense because if you were in any other district, you probably wouldn't want to let your school. So it's very important that as a transition, you're going to see that continuation of instructional practices. So I'm going to go through our primary classes and then on the next slide, as you saw, will be the activities that we're going to support this. So again, we're really focusing on the COVID learning gaps in our third grade communities. And the social emotional students support, we can't really live on. Elizabeth's a little bit different on my campus. It's our student start performance, it's just a little late. So we have to continue to look at our student achievement and how we're going to progress with that. Our third graders are part of that house bill three, so they have those reading academies as well. We are looking at consistent instructional practices, focusing on reading and math. We're looking at high-quality instructional support, including coaching. Enrichment through STEM and consistent utilization of our science lab. We've got beautiful science labs on our campus. Needing engagement, including bridge support and training and consistent, sorry, discipline management. So our activities and strategies that are going to support these needs are, we are really looking at our social emotional plan to support student emotional needs. Some of that we are going to, with our counselor support, are going to push through a morning message. But it's not important just for them to do it, but for our teachers, so it's going to be a school-wide social emotional support system. We're going to continue with our campus-wide interventions, including our win time, which is what I mean by time. To target those individual student needs and achievement needs star. So not just intervention, but also providing enrichment for those students who are needing that additional challenge. We are looking at planning and implementing instructional strategy through dedicated virtual planning times across content and grade levels. So our third grade will be with our fourth grade, our fourth grade will be with our fifth grade. So we can align our strategies. And that being said, our second grade at primary will also be with our third grade and will plan by our dip to plan with those goals, so that we are all consistent in that. And it's good for them to have those conversations as well. We will provide research-based training and support for campus-wide implementation of guided reading and guided math. Like this one I said, two weeks ago, our teachers on their online, getting guided math training, we're excited. And we're excited for them too. And we will be having some guided reading training when some of those pre-loaded P D days are going to start. We continue to give a location of great free programs program. We would love to provide a STEM teacher with a unified in our STEM line to be able to challenge our students, get them ready for that next step. And we really need that they're capable of some of that engineering, robotics, those kinds of things. And they're excited about it and we have the facilities for it, so we're hoping to make that possible. We also want to continue supporting our student family engagement. A big part that we learned this year was the impact of social media. So we really want to be able to tell our story at the intermediate because we've got amazing teachers, we've got amazing students, and they do amazing things and we don't need to be shy about it. We need to tell what we're doing. And so we are really going to be focusing on that. Engaging our parents, letting them know what's going on and then finding opportunities for them to also support our campus. We are also going to look at student discipline implication with positive interventions. We're looking at ways for our teachers to have those conversations with their students and being able to redirect some of the behaviors that may have been done to run beneath the best student capability. So we are looking at that as well. So I'm really super, super excited for next year and to play that. I know this year has been challenging, but I think whatever we went through this year has only made us stronger. And again, I'm so super excited. So are there any questions?
I'm just excited that y'all are taking the time to challenge every student on your campus. Not just the needs of specific children, that every child should be pushed to the next limit and they'll be better tomorrow than they were today. And I'd like to take your emphasis on challenging every student that works for your course.
You know, these areas, middle school. Hi, good evening. So some of the things that we're focusing on in middle school are some of the things that have been addressed with primary and intermediate. The number one thing is the impact of this closure, this disbarning. The impact that it creates on our students, they were back and forth. So our goal is to address the learning gaps, so that's our first priority. The next thing is middle school. It's not even a better job of meeting their social emotional needs because they are very social, especially in middle school. So that is our second priority as well. As well as providing intervention and enrichment opportunities, this is part of the primary and intermediate. We are going to do our best to meet every student's needs, not just students at the bottom, students at the top, all our students. And also provide instructional and technology support. That was something we're lacking with COVID. We've kind of improved, we've accelerated in that, and we're continuing down that path. We know our students are engaged, we've got their license, their technology, so we want to continue down that track. The other thing we're going to focus in on is on writing and reading strategies. We value that for reading to middle school, especially in these, so we're going to continue with that. And also provide staff development for our teachers in their core content areas, so math, E L A R, social studies and science. Willing prevention and intervention. We're going to provide more staff development for our teachers and our counselors to provide these interventions that's going to avoid things happening. So willing prevention is also one of our priorities at middle school. And as always, communication with staff and fans. Here are the strategies that we're going to implement at the middle school. We're going to purchase equipment, we're going to provide staff development, training, instructional technology. One of the things we'd like to do this year, that we want to do this past year because of COVID and gatherings, I think it's important for us to see the parents and say, hey, let's look at the parent portal. Let me see if, oh, let me get you set up on that. Because that is something that has locked up the confidence, we want to take their time for us to help the parents and show them how to do those kinds of things. So some of the things, one of the strategies that we have in place, we want to do this in the school. The other thing is we also want to provide intervention within the school day. Before and after school, let's do it, let's capture them while they're here with us in school. So we want to have a more focused approach and we want to provide those opportunities for intervention and remediation as well as enrichment. The other thing is provide opportunities for positive decision-making, guidance, lessons and presentations. We have some companies coming in to give our students assemblies, show them this is a better approach at this type of situation. So we've already contacted some individuals to come in, so we will have that for our middle school campus. As well as go over willing prevention strategies, those kinds of things. And of course, as always, as I mentioned, those parents events, so the parents can come in and we can train them so that they can also better support their students at home.
Very good idea. I think I'll mention that I need players, parents in to educate them on how to give them new systems so they can cover their shoes. That's the first thing that is, they get good instruction at school, they get it at home as well, the backup. That's, that's, that's very good. Everyone's talking about the same thing, the transfer problem, and that's, that's where it starts. You get the problem, you got one of their students.
Yeah, so the good thing is that we're all learning at the same time, we have school power plus. So we're all learning, we're learning as well as the parents, so we'll be perfect, so perfect time.
Just like this, and I should have listened to you earlier to two articles from the Boston. Where are we on our speed program this year?
Okay, so this year we are doing the, for daily staff development as far as the coaching model. We have two certified staff members going into our coaching classes and maybe two certified going in and teaching our classes. So that is still a priority, okay? So it's going to be like, it's kind of like a homeroom, at the day we have homeroom. So we're going to have, at intermediate, they have what's called win time, what I mean. So we're going to kind of continue with that. And so the students will go, like, for example, you'll go to math, you'll go to the math teacher and you'll get intervention. Or if you're great at math, then maybe we need to go get, maybe the eighth grade, you know, what eighth grade math is doing. It kind of challenges you, so that's, that's what we do. It's an advisory, but I call it advisory time. So it's built into the schedule versus before or after school. We have them there, let's capture them there. Now, let's face it, middle school, they have activities after school, we want to capture them while they're on campus.
Another question, our age breakers, as they're going to their freshman year, are, how close are you to the high school or, you know, because, so if you figure out what they can take, what they can't take, it also, or it will always, you know.
I completely agree, but I can tell you that with the principals, I know that I'm always calling them up, hey, we're bringing in new types of services that we are providing, how are we going to support? So, you know, in terms of, you know, high school, we're willing to work with high school. You know, the thing that right now is real big, and I think Christina has been on it, but I think she's been on social media. That's a big thing right now. So we want to provide more training in social media for our students, you know. Knowing when to post something, it means not to post it because a lot of our time is taken up in social media. Of course, we can't control what students do at home, but by bringing parents in and telling them, hey, this is what your kids doing at home, they need to be more vigilant. But we hope to have, you know, talks with parents and bring them in. Right, exactly. I think in years past, we brought them on CCPD, so they can do some sort of a training, so they can show parents all, you know, the things that are going on with their kids in terms of social media. Thank you. High school, will you present by that, that line?
So for the high school, we have five key areas that are almost near the district's five key areas. So we have student achievement, advanced academics, COVID learning loss, mental health and wellness and youth support. Expect student achievement, the one key area that we were worrying as we were doing distance learning. Also kind of current today, in the spring, our results, our Alpha One scores. And just the need to address certain areas of weakness that are kind of exposed a bit with our distance running. Because as our math teacher would be able to look to, it's much easier to teach math. You have student case in case, the derivatives and the calculator, there's a lot of interaction with our math in order to maximize what student achievement looks like within math. And so that will be something that will be readdressed as also as you turn back to campus. Same thing with our industry-based certifications and how that works with CCMR and our college career and military readiness goals. One thing that really kind of hurt us this year with COVID was our inability to really get out into W D and into the businesses, be hands-on, working with our practice comes so that we can gain the necessary hours to move on to that next step for auto testing or completing a certification. And so COVID really kind of hampered our efforts there a little bit. But we are ready to move into our next phase for next year, once our businesses and other key areas are opening up here. When it comes to advanced academics, one area that we will continue to focus on is the AP area. Currently, our total credit program is doing really, really strong. Our numbers are very solid there, but we wanted to also make sure that not only are our AP numbers high, but the exam participation long with that class is high as well. In addition to AP, we also have a requirement on hospital block this upcoming school year, which is to ensure that all seniors graduate with a hundred percent basketball completion. And that's just to, again, ensure that we are giving each student that equity of opportunity for that college access. Even if their pathway is still in, but they're not going on a college pathway. We're going to make sure that all students graduate with the best opportunity. When it comes to the COVID learning loss, there are three key areas that even through summer school right now, and if we move into next school year, if we have an intercession, we're going to continue to address. Those are tennis recovery, writer recovery and the whole childhood problem piece, which the other principals have already done, we'll explain. Kind of tying that into the mental health and wellness, those are key areas are life readiness in those fields, but also ensuring that, again, it's all students who return back to campus that we're really prioritizing and focusing on living better places for our students. And the final piece called this is ensuring that as we hire fit staff for next year, that at the high school, that we're providing as much new teacher support as we can. And through those, through these sports, we're going to be doing mentoring, making sure that our new teachers are supported through technology and our expectations of the district for blended learning. But also making sure that for any first year or new to district staff member understands T M's way of classroom routines and procedures. And again, making sure that that's restructured and create systems for our students that we have the knowledge side of building those relationships. And so I've already spoken a little bit about the strategies, how the high school can evolve about achieving its goals. But in three key areas, this is going to be our focus. Within the master schedule, we're going to make sure that we're being student-driven and making sure that we are analyzing the necessary data that tells us what questions need or don't need. Versus right now, based on what we're looking at in our star results, we're looking at the options we're double blocking. we're looking at the options, we're double blocking students who are only at coaches or below in at least English or algebra, just to make sure that whatever learning loss is there, we're regrouping that through additional time. When it comes to collaboration and also professional development, we're gonna ensure that the master schedule aligns with teachers, so that we can maximize their planning and professional learning time throughout the day. Um, one key area we will do this with, is with our department heads, but we will also look at other teaching leaders in key areas such as technology for our school and school support, but also making sure that we are reaching out to our adversaries and proactive students to make sure that if we have an additional period for remediation or enrichment, we're taking that. And then, again, the last piece of all of that, to make a master schedule truly student-driven, is just ensuring that we are looking at the data, making sure that we're monitoring our special student populations, and that as we build master schedule, we are prioritizing special student populations, so that they are getting all the needs and we are getting those needs for help. Uh, when it comes to intercession, we're gonna continue to focus on the two key areas of intervention and enrichment. Uh, one key area for intervention that we are definitely going to continue to forward during intercession is the attendance recovery piece. Uh, we're experimenting with that still this summer, in terms of what we can get out of that from our students in hours and curriculum, and we've come up with some really good ideas that seem to be really working with some of our students who are a little reluctant to, uh, be at school on daily basis, so we're excited to roll that out for next year. And then, of course, the enrichment piece, the balance of that is gonna be sure that we're offering staff in college test prep for students that, um, would, students have to really benefit from that for us. Um, and then the last piece here is communication, uh, our key areas, being using technology, so that we are consistently communicating with all parent organizations at the high school. I know right now we use Mind, Facebook, it's a lot of social media pieces, but what we're really wanting to do is create a system where we're all communicating using one mode, and everybody receives the same message at the same time. So again, trying to create that empathy here, and it's not just for us, it's our community members as well. Um, and one piece to that, as we are building and getting ready to roll off a new website, um, one thing we're looking at when we're doing a new website is making sure that we are providing online opportunities to purchase tickets, uh, to events or other activities, so that anytime, anywhere, all parents in our community have that same access. And then, of course, um, as students return, and we are working to reacclimate them back in the student way, and we do things here at TM, is just ensuring that safety, security, personal, most authority, and if needed, and as needed, we are continuously structuring and prioritizing our drills, so that all staff, all students know what to do in the event there is an emergency response to.
On the, the high school, certain job, it pretty much, the academic, on the athletic part, uh, in the past, we haven't addressed our athletes to be able to progress also now that we have a D, and my goal is to see them, uh, get the same opportunities in these type of day athletic, where I'm at, college, to be supportive there, and most people as far as, uh, maybe college is not where they are.
No time, working on a master schedule on a routine basis, and we're definitely planning for those in mind.
Do you have an idea of what our credit rating was this semester?
I'll have to look at the table reports to make sure.
I know.
I, I haven't played with the table report in any time yet.
How is credit recovery going this semester?
It's going really well. Uh, part of the requirement that I think a lot of, um, I would say, kind of part of this trouble, we're trying to recover the, any type of credit that is being presented, is the attendance requirement behind that expectation. And so, students are only allowed to miss one day in order to maximize that accountability of attendance throughout the entire time of summer school. So it doesn't matter if they miss for a legitimate reason, or if there's a doctor's excuse, they're only allowed one day, and that's been the struggle, because as we all know, attendance goes hand in hand with academics, and without the attendance piece, we can't ensure that there's split out, without the behind that recovery. So that's also part of the requirement, and so we're happy to see that students understood that, and they've really stuck it out, because, again, we think credit recovery, we think they're doing it through our online program, that's something that can be done anytime, anywhere, forever, but our expectations are further, where it has to be done on campus, one-on-one with our teachers, backfire, and it's important.
Your next campus, last one, we used ACC, Melody McClear.
Our report looks a little bit different than the other campuses, and I might have to explain why. Back in August, um, when we brought students back on campus, ACC actually had about ninety-five percent of our students were shown up in person. So a lot of the learning loss that was experienced by students who either were at home, or were staying on, um, a device, or did not attend, we didn't have that, because about ninety-five percent of our kids were in person from the time they came back. Also, what happened was that by Christmas, we had a hundred percent of our kids back. Um, but what we did see, and part of what our already, um, marginal kids experience, because they are all at this, um, was addressing the trauma and the resilience of the students. Part of why they came back is because they know at ACC, they won't be dead, they're going to have air conditioning when it's hot, they're going to have heat when it's cold. Um, we did a lot to help our students during the time that, um, things were difficult. We, uh, continued to make home visits the entire time our kids were not with us. Even, uh, during the freeze, we went out to look to our kids' homes, we took blankets to them, we made sure that any kind of trauma that they were experiencing at the time, we would be there to help them with. We just completed a twelve-week course in addressing trauma in students who are experiencing that in their homes, or that have experienced it in the past, and we feel that with each course we have continued to work on, we are getting more and more strategically prepared to help those kids. Many of our kids have been affected, their parents have lost their jobs, they don't have income, we have, um, parents who, uh, you know, maybe a brain currently with them, they lost their life to COVID, there's been a lot that our students have gone through. And so our top priority will be addressing trauma and resilience in our kids. Um, our college and career readiness continues to be a huge focus. Um, this year, we saw tremendous gains. We have two students who are attending A and M Corpus Christi, we have two students who are ordering in school at A and M Kingsville, we have a number of students at Del Mar, we have a student who was accepted in the International Republican Electrical Workers Program, he is going there, and we have a number of students who are doing or completing their training in welding or electrical at the craft training center. So we have plenty of kids that are out there and taking advantage of the college and career readiness. We still are not happy, and we will not be happy until we have something for every one of those students to know that they are leaving their high school with the ability to either go to school or go out and be in the workforce. We also are improving our opportunities for industry certification. We have been looking at a number of different certifications that we can add to our offerings at ACC. Um, we actually are working through a number of different agencies, some of them in Austin, in order to improve that list, and we are working to make sure that every student knows what is available to them. Um, also, this upcoming year, we are going to be using a new program called Zello, and Zello actually goes in depth into, uh, introducing it, explaining to our students what kind of jobs are out there, what are the jobs of the future, what are you going to have to have in order to take on those jobs, and what do you need to do to be successful in them. So we did this new program, it's going to be a tremendous, um, asset to that as well. We want to make sure that each student has a secondary opportunity. It has long been a process and a procedure at ACC, that any student who comes to our campus will first of all take ASVAP. Um, we have a number of our students who choose to go to military option, but we also use that, um, test as a means of seeing what their interest is, because it is an interesting report. Every student who enters our school and leaves having already applied to Del Mar College. Every single student has applied and been accepted to Del Mar, and they have that when they leave. The other thing that we have done with all of our students is that we made a certain issue that every student who chooses to go, oh, that's okay, every, every student who chooses, um, to go to college, Mrs. Bane and one of the gentlemen from Del Mar sit with every single one of our students, they never leave us until their FAS applications are completed. We have gone to the home to pick up tax returns, we have gone to parents' businesses, no matter what it takes, those are the things our students want to meet with at ACC. We also are looking at improved instructional technology options for the classrooms. One of the things that we have found is that, and, and really, we started it about three years ago, but part of what has really increased the engagement of our students is when our teachers have the technology available to do things with the students that otherwise would be just looking at something on a screen, or, um, would be limited participation. Um, we have a wonderful program that we actually use in biology, where the students can dissect animals, um, through the computer. Then when they actually get to dissect the animals, we do beetle digs, we do frogs, we do, um, what's the word? I guess it wasn't that, I don't remember. Anyways, we have a lot of different animals that they dissect. Um, but after they have done it and seen it on the computer, and they're able to interact with that, when they actually do it in person, and they actually have that animal there, it means so much more to them, and they understand it so much better. The other thing that we have been encouraging and offering on our campus is TSI testing. And I don't know if you're aware of it or not, the sheer TSI is changing to TSI two, um, even though Mrs. Bane is leaving us, she has met with the medicine high school, uh, and they are working, uh, very hard at making sure we know everything we have to do to update for TSI two, so we can have preparation classes available, and our students can participate. Uh, our strategies include continuing to study and improve that creative that we have on our resident campus, increasing instructional media and subject-oriented programs, investigate career and college options with each student, purchase social technology programs for each subject in force, and improve TSI two testing and off preparation classes for TSI two.
Very helpful, y'all, to take care of students during the freeze and COVID weather.
Uh, we worked at houses constantly, it was, uh, Mrs. Bane knocked on doors, we, we called, well, kind of got a huddle, calling our, our kids every week, um, beginning when COVID started last spring, and we did it throughout the summer, but we have found that, um, we've always known that the relationship we have with our parents and our kids is the most important thing to our success, but getting out there, and especially when you know they're hungry and their families are hungry, you know they're cold, I mean, we have parents that were in tears because of children like us, because they have limited freedom of lives, and that is all part of being an educator, and it will be expected in, we'll continue to follow through.
I'll be back to you.
Every student is given the opportunity to take a TSI exam. So every one of our students who wants to take that test, we provide it for them for this project. And, um, I don't know if those were legislated, I don't remember that. We get reimbursed for one test, and, and, and then you have to take a, um, so, I know if, if a student has to retake something, um, you know, our staff has always gone out and burned money for our school through our work at the ice races or whatever, the staff does to burn money, and we keep that money aside, so that if a student eats something, we can take the money that we paid for it, or some of us just pay for it, you know, we do want to make sure our kids have those opportunities. So, um, we had, uh, in the D.C. year, I don't know if you looked at the table numbers, but even from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, moving our kids into that means a master's category, we're not there a hundred percent yet, but at least we're making progress, and we're seeing so many more of our kids passing the tests and doing well, and we really believe that focusing on the CCMR has helped our kids, and has encouraged them to do that, because in working with a correct training center, they also say on top of our kids now, you know, you've got to have the brains back on your academics. If you're gonna graduate, then go on to be a volunteer somewhere. Um, so we have, we really appreciate your support and what they do for our kids, we keep them on top of things and doing what they need to do as well.
As one of the oldest facilities we have on campus, have you, you need to be in there?
You know, I, I will have to tell you, I-
Yeah, several reports, some of the pictures, issue for the old.
Well, we, we actually, it's kind of funny you should finish that, because, um, we were talking about it the other day, and you were saying that, we, we heard what the report said, but considering the age of our facility, it's a beautiful condition, there's no graffiti on the walls, there's nothing that has been destroyed by students, um, it really, it is one of the oldest facilities, but they love that school, they take care of it, we always extend pride in our kids and tell them we're so lucky, and of course, some of us remember when it was in the old fieldhouse down, um, behind the old radiator, where we had snakes coming out with the rain bites from the showers, um, but, you know, to be honest with you, the only thing I would like is to have more room, I would love to be able to serve more kids. However, I would tell you, what goes on inside that building is more important than building itself. So to say that we need anything, we have everything we need to educate these kids and they're going to be successful, and we appreciate that it's being looked at. Um, by the way, because, you know, classrooms, we'd be happy for that, but we're fine, you're in line, thank you, gentlemen.
Have a question, just to tell you.
Yes, administration recommends board trustees approve the district and campus improvement plans as.
Thank you, Dr. Flavas, we have motioned administrative recommendation, please.
Come on over.
Felix, do you have a second, please? Do you have seconds? Any further discussion, comments, questions?
Uh, it seems like everyone's got a well-structured plan to take care of the kids, they're healthy, the slide that they had during the pandemic, which is exit, and then you're on all of that, to make sure that the children are addressed and the things that they missed out. So, kept up, others? So, look, kept up, others, I believe that should help. It sounds like I've got a plan for it. Thank you very much.
No further questions, comments, all those in favor? Those others? Motion carries.
Next item is discussing the resolution regarding SRR three and policy CD local and local. That's a reservation for joy.
Yes, what it brings you to you receiving this resolution that comes to us due to some added label federal funding. And you've heard of state S, what was it, NSA is a federal fund program that we actively can take in, in this portion of history already, we have for years. But now comes several layers of what is called by acronym SRR, SRR, and that is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. There are multiple layers or a few layers. We are already within the first layer, we are allowed to enter the second and the third. A lot of our information needs to come forward about that availability for you. We are in the throes, we are actively working on application and building plans and seeking input, there's a commitment to receive the test, perhaps about a survey that we requesting input on how we should use that money. That money is primarily to be used and spent on addressing the impact of open learning. Although we can have all kinds of other reasons, we are looking at all of our stakeholders for the impact that we directly use for this life form. With that said, um, TASI, they contacted all districts requesting in our best interest that we bring this resolution to our board for approval to make sure that we are aligned and compliant with all federal matching for the use of and the application of federal funds. We'll have to go through an application process, we will have to develop the process. And so, TASI drafted this resolution, it is the resolution that most districts across the state is adopting to make sure that we have a consistent approach to public notice when we are applying federal funds along with granting the approval ability to our superintendents. So, with that said, to add to that as well, the reason this is coming to happen is because it does not yet exist in CP local in any policy. And that is the case not just for Chilis, but most districts across Texas, absolute policy. And TASI recognized that gap of policy and has wanted to work to make sure we are covered, so that we can apply and extend federal funds through SRR. Any questions? Uh, SRR right now is, I think, effective for three years. Yes.
This is inherent to the policy.
Yes, it's because it lacks that language that helps us be compliant for federal program application.
Are they planning, I'm wondering, with the question, your resolution is part of the policy themselves, or we're going to give it to the office?
This will go immediately into other policy, like particularly after we've told the policy twice.
It lasts for eight years?
It will last at least three years, yes.
And then we're going to come up with something new or like a statement?
We're going to rely on the items that the state and TASI that, that function is.
Is this the new local policy?
That is the existing for your reference, just so you can see that it's not, it doesn't, it does not exist inside the current local policy, so you can see that for yourself.
So, this resolution for the local policy, how much is it?
Yes, that's right. There's a language that I said for change, so CP local is effective date will be an option date for this resolution. Because our, our application date is like July 27th, yeah, it's like this, this far away. And if you don't have this in place, we're not providing compliance to be able to apply. This grants the superintendent the ability to approve the application. But we will be bringing plans of that, of that, uh, the use of funds in general purposes in our classroom, I can't believe it actually for preservation.
Uh, the administration recommends Board Justties approved a resolution regarding SRR three and policy CD local as.
Thank you, Dr. Fernandez. We have a motion of administrative recommendation, please. Jim, do we have a second? Okay, any comments or questions? Comments or questions? All those in favor? Both, motion carries, seven zero. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is discuss and consider TMIZ internet safety policy.
TM board policies, CP local and CP legal direct the board to develop a campaign with regulations and guidelines and support the mission of our district. The document being brought to unite internet safety policy, which meets requirements of these policies. The, they also meet these requirements that the E-Rate program, and we know the E-Rate program is a program that funds less than our level of infrastructure. So, it had a headquarter requirement, it brings to you an internet safety policy, pre-review and adoption to submit to the app so that they can continue working. So, basically, this is an internet safety policy that has, uh, parts of it again are in other documents that we have, but this is just a separate document just for internet safety that we can use to present to E-Rate, so we can continue working. Because it uses a lot of our technology and our internet access. Yes, there was a time, but this year they're reimbursing us the last couple of years at nothing for our costs. So, we want to provide it to you. Yes, we had, we, 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 I think it was, it was 60%. But they changed that now, we're getting this year at 90%, that's sure we'll probably go down to 80%. But that's a big chunk of technology and technology and so this is a document that they've brought. Thank you.
Administration recommends the Board Justties approved proposals TMIZ internet safety policy as.
Thank you, Dr. Fernandez. We have a motion of administrative recommendation, please. So, Felix, do you have a second? And, okay, any other comments or questions? This is very good for us, thank you very much. All those in favor? Those possible cases, seven zero, thank you very much.
Uh, next item, discuss and consider food service bid in contact with 2021, 2023 school year, Mr. Patrick Fernandez.
Please, just to recap a little quickly, uh, back in January, we decided to rebid the food service, uh, program for the district. We involved a process, we filled out the RFP, federally completed, finally approved on March the 19th. TDA responded back that they approved our, uh, RFP. We went out for bid, solicited bids, we advertised, and we got all the information back. We evaluated the vendors, the business of their presentations. On April the 26th, as you recall, we submitted to TDA our recommendation. We expected to hear something back in a week or two to bring it back to the board, uh, to, to approve it. It was not until May the 24th that TDA responded. And at that time, they concluded that the, the RFP that we'd submitted was invalid, it had some irregularities. So, they requested that we submit the other two bids, the other two vendors that applied, we had total of three vendors apply. They concluded that all three, uh, bids were irregular and had issues. So, at that time, we were left with three, three options. Uh, option number one was to work with the TDA legal team and our legal team to strike out, uh, the, the imbalances in the, uh, the RFPs that everyone would be equal. The entire process was going to take two to three weeks, but more importantly in that process, it was going to take out all the advantages we were looking for. Increased pay for the, our employees, the cafeteria employees, uh, the increased staffing, so that we'd have more staff and be more efficient in our cafeterias. We were going to lose all that, so there was no real benefit to that option. The second option was to request an emergency bid process, uh, through TDA that would also have to be approved by the, uh, USDF. Again, that was going to be a bare bones process, uh, really not much advantage to the district. The third option we were given was to renew a one-year contract with our existing supplier. Uh, we met Dr. Fernandez, myself, we met with Airmark, and they were willing to do that. So, we were, we will simply just renew for one, for one year and then redo the process again. Because we're not the only district that went through this, TDA went through a number of changes. There's a number of schools that have yet, uh, to make it through the approval process, we're not the only ones. Unfortunately, we're around school, our first day of school is July the 14th. The other districts have until August, the middle of August or early August to get their issues resolved. So, I feel that, we feel that our best interest for our district and our students, it's not fair to bring in a new company with less than 30 days to retrain the existing staff, get everything going, and be ready to give our, our students a quality meal on July the 14th. So, that is my recommendation that Dr. Fernandez is going to make is that we go to option number three, that we renew our existing contract for one year with Airmark and redo it in one year. No, no, next year. And it opens up typically around the, the March, uh, February, March timeline, and then we did.
So, how do you want to extend it?
This is just, we were still, we had four years remaining in our contract, and we went out for a redo. Only because we actually had four years left in the contract, we'd be able to do this. Had we been at the fifth year of the contract, our only other option would have been either option one, the legal, or number two, to do an emergency bid.
So, normally a contract is for five years?
It's one year within options renew four years.
Well, we give them the contract, though, we give them the four-year, you know, you move on to the fourth year. So, that's the debt we go again. So, during those other years, they didn't have to spend another debt, or you weren't taking them back?
There, if you're happy with the service and everything's going all right, you can have the reasons, and then, uh, there's a little change in the pricing. There are a lot of things that increase the price of the consumer index inflation events. And so, in this, in doing this, in our agreement with Airmark is they're not raising any of the prices for this one year, they're keeping everything exactly the same.
Are we losing this person that they have to provide?
No, sir. Their, their commitment is to, to, uh.
Are they adding it?
I, I have a meeting tomorrow morning, 10:30 with them. Uh, I'd like to improve our services and that's all we can.
I want to thank Patrick for, um, a lot of work, a lot of, uh, interaction with TDA and some of the little bit kind of changes on the fly. And Patrick's been a great job throughout, always an investment to support our mission.
Okay, it is recommended the Board reject all proposals received by district in response to which request proposal in contact with school nutrition program through the service management company authorized superintendent, take necessary actions to renew the district's current service management contract with Airmark and services of C four for one year.
Thank you, Dr. Fernandez. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second, please? John, any comments or questions? If you have no comments or questions, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you very much, Dr. Fernandez.
Uh, next item is discuss and consider 2021, 2023, and the pository selection.
Remember, we, because we knew our main pository contract over two years, we went out for proposals about just eight years ago, and we were able to extend that. Normally, they give you two extensions, in the middle of that, they changed to allow us to give you three extensions. We read that we'd already done our third extension with Pository. So, they also kind of changed the rules a little bit, we could go out for, uh, possible banks. You are required to, uh, offer any banks that's within your district, you have to ask them to, uh, if they want bid. And then other than that, you'll have, you'll have to hit two other banks if you want to go to the banks that are outside of your district. We only have one bank that's within our boundaries, that's Charter Bank. We did invite them, they, they always admire you not want to, uh, have them, uh, uh, to do like this. Because it does take, it does take requirements to be, uh, a pository, you're all of us in the street, there are some rules that you have to follow and special procedures that you have to follow, they're not interested in you. So, we sent proposals to Prosperity Bank, our current, uh, bank, and we also sent complaints capital, uh, and got their proposal spent. We look at them for, uh, we have to give them our summary of our transactions, what's the volume of our company deposit again, and the checks if you write, what's the average balance of your accounts, all the information so they can give us, uh, their proposals. We got the two proposals back, uh, we're recommending that we stay with Prosperity, uh, for one thing, it's really massive change banking. Thankfully, they came back, and they're offering us the really good deal, they're not going to charge us any, any of those banks. And you'll see the other proposal, the claims they are sending, there's a, there's a charge, every single deposit, there's a slight charge, every check that clears the bank is a charge. Every, you know, all these other transactions are going to fee. And then they'll offer you a little bit of interest income to offset the fees. But once again, Prosperity is offering us, uh, no fees, the only fees that they're, they're adding this year is we're going to charge them the fee if you have a check that's returned, uh, bringing sufficient funds, and they're going to charge us for that. But we're going to turn around that, we're going to work with the campuses and the markets, and if we have a check that comes back, that's going to be part of the rule. When we ask for the minimum back, we're going to ask for either majority or passion, you have to, uh, make what you put. And they're offering us, uh, an interest rate, uh, that's a fixed one, the, um, the market rate or the, uh, the TAPD is, they're offering us an interest rate, so we can have earnings on the funds that we use. Plains only offer us a 0.35% interest, uh, which is only, you know, one-third, one percent. But that was only to offset the fees. So, we'd like to go with Prosperity again for two more years, and then, once we start this process, we'll have, we'll have the option to renew with them for three more, three more periods after that. But every two years, we do have the option if you want to, to go stick with, if you want to go with that. But for this time, based upon, they're going to give us a little bit of interest, they're not going to charge us any fees except for the type of checks. And Prosperity is the closest bank, uh, outside, it's not in our district, but they are the closest bank to us, so it's convenient to us. It's not that convenient for us to get our funds, to take and, to take that business. And once again, you know, they, uh, you know, you don't have to have, you don't have to have an account with Prosperity to cash a TMIZ check at Prosperity. So, you know, they know it's a profit, you know, wherever you pay it yourself, you can always cash a check at Prosperity. So, it tells us, even though they're not in our district, they're right down the road, and we've had good relationship, relationship with them for the past eight years. So, that's why it's not going to be that we. why we're not going to approve the pository contract for the next two years with Prosperity.
There's no other fees, are there?
No, we don't. Only on, only on return items, only if we deposit a check, someone gets it to us, and it comes back, they're going to charge us the fee, but we're going to work on that and recover that fee when we get the product back from the other ones.
Do you have a lot of needs to be heard, Ken?
We do a lot, I would say, we never have more than, we never have more than one or two a month. I haven't really seen, we really don't have a lot. Now that people are, we do accept credit cards for some things, we just seem, we just haven't seen a lot of, we don't have a lot of returns. We always encourage, what else that is, that's why we're going to give things a positive to positive, because sometimes, people collect checks and things, and they keep them for a while, and as long as we keep them, the point of positive, people forget that they were in, that they were in preparation, so when we deposit something later, it comes back because it is, time has passed and they can clear the bank right away. So we encourage the campus to positive, positive checks, positive signs of positive.
So, should we, when we have a brief answer, with one primary and then two outside? One industry?
Yeah, we're required to submit the proposal to the bankers in our district, because we only have one. I did, I did invite them to do that.
And this is a problem, this is just, we're trying to cap this, so this is about, did it give you a problem or?
We only have, we only have two banks, we only have two checks, we only have two accounts. We have a general fund account, all money gets deposited positively, we run this called central cash, doesn't matter what fund it is, whatever, we keep tracking it, it all goes into one account, and then we have a separate payroll account that handles all our financial connections. We only have two checking accounts from it, so everything is, everything is a positive initiative.
You're talking about, that's another question, Ken?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm talking about, if, if-
Is it, have you covered it?
If it has, if it has the fundraise or whatever, and they've set checks, we deposit if that check amounts, go to the front of the person who has the check, they're going to charge us the fee now. We're going to turn around, and we probably can go back and collect the money, the cash, and work with the law, and say we-
Not making you pay for it?
Yes.
So who are, what's the question?
My signature, signature board, we have the, the president of the board, and it's on there, Dr. Fernandez, and then two people in my office, myself and the, my signature board. We're, we're the locals over there. Lady Parker, Mr. Pauschel, on my side. I did, I did have the president and the superintendent, because those are the signatures that are on the checks, and then two people in my office who are also signature board.
On the check, we're not, I mean, let's say, apparently, we're still going to have problems covering our check. We're not going to charge them any more than what we're being charged for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't have any money for that, but it's going to grow up, it's going to grow up. Any other questions, Dr.?
So you just, you don't know who is on the calendar, which is one of the people?
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure it's just, it's still, that's the way it is. I'm getting confused, the secretary has to sign, he's not, he's not, he's not.
All right. Is the administration's recommendation that board trustee approve the pository contract with funds for a period of September first, twenty-one to October thirty-third, twenty-twenty?
Is the name, is that the name?
It's, it's on the contract?
Okay, so it just come back, huh?
Yes.
The name is on the contract?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Fernandez. Do we have a motion and administrative recommendation, please? Felix, do we have a second, please? Neil, we have a second. All right, any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Dr. Fernandez.
I have a safety discussion to share this week, twenty-one, twenty-two, teacher salary schedule.
This will be a drawing presentation, because I'll be the presentation for the teacher salary schedule. If you have any questions concerning, as you hear, pay rates, and other things, but every school year, because we start so early, by law, every teacher, librarian, and registered school nurse must be on a teacher's salary schedule. And at completion of the year, then all these three people will earn a year, and they'll increase in step. Because we start so early, and our budget has not been approved by this time, and because we have to pay our first, when we form the first payroll check in August, and the budget has not been approved by then, we have to adopt the same salary schedule that we just did with, because teachers cannot start eating without a salary schedule. So every school year, around this time, we renew the salary schedule that we had the previous year, and was exactly what you had before you. The only thing we did was change the number on the top, the twenty-one and twenty-two school year. Every school year, if the board approves a school, a raise for the teachers or employees that will present up in our budget, then we will go back and we will pay retroactive pay in our September paycheck, because we take it back all the way to the first day that the employees worked. Will I have any questions?
Have we always done that before, Ken?
Yes, we do it every school year. In September, the teachers, for the September paycheck, if anything come wrong, will get the raise, because any money that we owe them for the days that they have worked since the first day of work, that is, everybody. Questions?
I have one.
Yes?
I know we're going to go to the, to the, to the, to the, to the, to the, to the dessert for soon, is it after this, or is it just, is it, is it locked, is it?
It's locked, at that point, unless the board decides we need to go further, can we present that and come back? Some districts will have to wait. We take it all the way up to the third.
So this is part of, this, this is part of what we're saying, these years?
That's a border, but there is a minimum salary today, and the state puts out, because we cannot pay any less than what the state pays.
How many words did it say, what did you?
We used twenty, twenty. Twenty twenty. When is the last time this has been adjusted? Last year we gave a raise.
So these are last year's?
Yes, that's what we started with last year.
All right. We gave a raise, we gave a raise for nineteen twenty, and we did not do a regular raise for twenty twenty. So this is the same, this is the same salary schedule.
The last year?
So these numbers are two years?
But what I meant was, every year, each twelve steps, so they at least get the step raise.
That's right. By talking to the staff, you're approving their step. So if you're on the step all, now that it's a six, it's a higher salary, it's a six.
So the, what we did with the, 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 these numbers, these numbers have not changed for two years, but in the last two years, the teachers, they've lived us all three years, they've gotten, they've gotten step increases because they've gone up in experience, they've, they've gone up.
It's pretty much showing. So they're, they're getting a step raise, and I, you're basically improving the step rates. And hopefully, back when it's public, you can, you can, you can get an additional, um, increase in your justice.
So the goal step increase plus one, and it'll stretch back to July fourteenth, or start date, or whatever.
The first day.
Of course, they have it.
So I can, I can, that, but it's not a change.
You?
It's not a change. You give a rate that we adjust.
Yes, we have not increased the step limits since nineteen. Teachers, we have not increased, this, this schedule was identical to one from the last year, but people have gotten step increases in the last year because they've been up to us. So, let, let me go back to the steps here. If you were a zero year teacher, two years ago, you made forty-six, four hundred dollars. Then last year, you went up to step one, so you made whatever that's something. Next year, you're going to go on step two, and you're going to make that step. So, so the numbers have not changed, but people's salary account, because they've gone up, they've gone up, we've been, so, and the last time we changed those numbers, it was nineteen?
Nineteen twenty or twenty?
The nineteen dash twenty years.
Oh, oh. That's a question. I don't know. This is, this is, this is, this is basically a positive step, so when I figure, I think more than this step.
Not at this time, because until, until I can finalize and become a revenue, to be, to be sure we're able to afford, as far as, as far as, we've got that coming, we have to, we have to.
Do you have any idea what we're looking at?
Everything is very, very preliminary right now, and now we've got the added complexity of, we've got these other federal funds that are going to be promoting that we can use in offsets and other expenses, so we've got a lot to look at over the next few weeks. The file pieces, that's the way to get the five certified values, which will not be why we did. So, and then, basically now, the state basically sets our tax rate. We don't get to determine what our tax rate is, basically, the whole, the state, it's the whole state, it says how to talk about it, it's the whole state, that, that hard to determine what we have to assess our, our tax rate. Once I do the tax rate, the state gives us after, after our values, we know why we did, and then, Chris, remember, it's going to say, what's the maximum, what permanently increases, or a teacher can get all of this, possibly, that's, that's, that's.
What, what, what are you doing with that?
Yes, the, the goal is to definitely, as the, as the, is to have a, a permanent possibility.
How many, do you have, step, do you have?
Absolutely.
So this COVID money won't be able to pay off, like you said, other commitments we have, the metal allows, try to move a bigger paper.
Yeah.
Now look at the whole picture.
We sustain it.
Right.
Because it's, it's difficult to, it's difficult to replace positions that we currently have with COVID money, because that COVID money is not, that's not, so we have, we have to, we'll get things, we're going to, we can use COVID money for, maybe if it's temporary, or not, but we, we have to, we have to make sure it's, we can value it, we can sustain it. Because every year, every year, we pretty much start from scratch. We start from the base budget, we look at revenues and see what, what does it look like the revenue, and then we see what we can do to match the schedules to the cost of, and, and offer our, the highest condition.
So, is it fair to say for teachers that will give you size for the step?
Yes.
We are going to give you a raise, so they will be retro. My office, the chairman of this year, we should know.
We have the doctor budget, the full office, other person, so definitely, when you go office, we have, we have the doctor. Thankfully, by that time, we'll know when the state, but actually, because we will be able to, but we'll just, to, to.
I understand, but still, I would mention, I have a question. So the only time we have not changed this formula is, you said, the twenty?
No, it's the twenty, the last time we gave, the last time we gave a formula, the increase to the salary scale, was twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. It's weird, that was maybe the last time, so, and they, they funded the increase, and they said, you have to give your, you have to give your teachers with one or five years experience, a higher percentage rate than your team for that, and zero or five years experience. So we were able to, we exceeded the requirements from the state two years ago, the last time we, the raise that we gave our employees, the average part of children was something like sixty-five percent. That was back to two thousand and two, two thousand. So exactly two years ago, COVID, the legislature last met, they, they pushed forward the teacher increases, or they took increases, and we, they do, of the state, and said we need to increase our, so that was two years, two just. So for the nineteen, for the two thousand, twenty, two thousand and one year, the year that just ended, all we did was, we adopted the step, we did a couple of raises, we adopted the same schedule that you're adopting tonight, so we got the step raise money. And we also were in the budget for the year that just ended, we included a thousand dollar petition, which is not permanent, but all employees that were here, TRS, they got five hundred dollars, they got five hundred dollars on last day, and everybody got their, their second five hundred dollars. So everybody, TRS, they departed, so they could pay work here, and started, that was in the budget for two years, two years. So teachers got a step raise, employees got a thousand dollars.
Do you have any, 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 any?
Well, we'll have to look at, once we look at our revenues, if we give a raise, we probably won't, we won't be able to fund a petition incentive from general fund, but when we prepare our, that is what basically gets rid of our COVID money, our, is for kitchen, kitchen policy, that's why, we can use our federal funds and offer our employees some additional compensation.
I have one more question, I don't know, how to, and what year does our, and what year do our teachers become the, the pay scale to our name for your school?
You really have to, year one? You have to look, you have to look at all of them, I don't have all the salaries minimized, but I definitely, I can provide you with, I have a summary to what all the salaries were this last year, for most of the districts in region two, that, that provides you some of that.
I think that's something that you would have.
Because, because another thing to look at is, you want to look at what the range is between step zero, which is, that's a range, and there's another thing, always to do, we look at, 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 we'll see some of the scales. The gap between zero and thirty-one is not as big as other districts, because they might have loaded comparison to the home steps, or the last steps. I'll give you an example, House of Down the Herald, they just increased their beginning steps, we, about step thirteen, we're, we're still higher than House on our steps, and each one, so I'm glad to provide that, as some ways of, most of the regions, uh, districts, of their, of their wages are, you'll see the differences, some schools only working, not all schools really working, you'll see the differences.
So that just goes a little bit, yeah. Do you want teachers to have?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anna. Please.
Administration recommendation, board trustee, reduce teacher salaries, teacher salary schedule.
Thank you, Dr. Fernandez. So I make that motion, do we have a second, please?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, make that motion to be in the second place. It's kind of hard to see right now this day.
It looks like she was kissing her hand, but if you got one of those left on the menu.
A bin segment. Any comments or questions? Uh thank you for the explanation. Get it that budget out of that room. Any other comments or questions? All those who favor it. That is a post question case, so thank you very much.
I've been to the request. Class ranking, force access, and practice with policy of L's equal. Uh I would remind everybody that we're discussing these types of issues that you must adhere to our current law and make sure that our students cannot be identified. I would ask that you think about that if you have questions. Uh I would ask you directly questions to me, and then I will find you some help with that. Some of my background is is I had the uh bachelor degree in GPA and class rank and course guides in my prior districts, partnership with Allen ISP, Alonite ISP, some other stuff. I've become into being familiar with different ways to try to provide a lead. A lot of districts doing a lot of different things. Really, it's the moving ways to do it, just what makes it work. Um so I would actually just invest in my ability and you know. There's nothing there's something that we can follow up on, I'm happy to do that. So if you want to ask me questions, I can answer them.
Doctor Anderson, I was the first one, another one that actually requested the second meeting. The agenda will be averaging the first session. Uh it seemed like there was a step process to approving courses that were waiting to be taken. And it's over in that in that discussion and in that process. It's something that's.
Excuse me, John, you referring to something that happened in close session?
No, I'm saying that I'm saying that in Kentucky, something happened in close session. And when the discussions of the data in our January the first meeting, I'm sorry, June first. But where our our trend to find out is, is there a proper procedure that needs to be followed that affects this class rankings?
In term, yes, I mean usually your class your classroom, your classroom course guide is adopted by the board. Um that is usually a collab of the work between your staff, members of community, members of central office, and very transparent process. Um and then once you come to a place where the consensus of people like this is the best way to find a clean our system that before it was a policy. So that's usually how that that would work.
Let me ask you a question. My question would be then if the process that we have in place now needs to be fixed to make it more readable, accessible, clear? And you said you've done this before? So apparently, there's something in place, but you say that you've proved it in other districts with collaborations with several other campuses, different. Uh you said Alonite.
Alonite, uh yes, there's been there we were part of a comprehensive study with about forty-five districts across the state. Cause we're having similar issues with, you know, everybody was having, what do you do? How do you weight it? Um what's the the fairest way to try to do that, right? No matter where you go, there is a GPA game that all types of happen. Um the issue becomes when the rules are not very clear of the game. The goal is to try to not have students make decisions about things that they love in order to create a GPA in. So we set out to how do we make sure that the student wants to do this, that they're afforded that while still they have aspirations to top two or whatever it may be. Try to put that piece of of it together. Not to say that I'm proven, I'm not going to say that because they're not. What is the best fit for a district, for a community, for a system? It's not, there's a million ways to slice it.
So you're saying there's good actual stat, you know, teachers.
I do, yes, because you want you need some input from all of the stakeholders. And ultimately, your kids are the ones that have to get the information to decide with their families, how do I use this information based on what I love and where I want to be when I graduate high school?
Yeah, so making it clear enough, so somebody coming in their freshman year.
I do. Here in middle school, you were having this conversation about how.
Yeah, seventh, eighth grade, yes.
Yes.
But they'll see it when you get a high school handbook, it's like there for him, everybody can see. That's that's what it means to be, that's what you're saying.
I do, yes, that would be.
Okay, done, so that that way everyone can have the same opportunity. The transparency, the fairness, the education process is there, so everyone would have the same access, the same. And that's just something that can be done with what we have now.
What will we currently have or will we?
Well, now what, you know, to improve. Might be there's the discrepancies.
Yes, we have a short window before we start. Usually these types of changes are made with a incoming cohort to high school, so you can alert the kids and the families of any change or adjustments. Um our window is short, uh so maybe there is much if there was a want to do some at the very least, probably clarify some things, right? The the issue of weights and the switch class and all that, that's a that's a probably a longer process than we necessarily may have time for to try to get it up in before school starts. But definitely the clarity, I think, the campus staff can can help them say, all right, this is what this means, this is how a student can be prepared to this.
So it starts somewhere.
Yes, yes.
So it needs to start somewhere, yes, it's like a volleyball program. It started with high schools, but at the middle school.
Yes, without.
Yeah. It's a segue to the video program.
I have a question, my friend. These classes are unwaived classes. How will they offer to students uh these past few years that are not in the curriculum of the one you're going to freshman year? How was that able to get? How were they able to get these classes if it's not on the curriculum? I mean, are classes offered?
That's your question, I don't know how in that process working within the high school. Depending on the course, uh because the different courses have a different requirement. Uh we have a lot that are either weighted or not weighted, and then you have a subset that do not count um course, they don't count a little bit. And so it depends on the course and and how that will be used. So it's hard to determine that about a specific course and knowing, all right, how does this go about questioning practices and what are the requirements to take that course based on how that may affect the ID or whatever our.
Is there any record in our system of these classes that were taken, that were approved by the principal, the superintendent, the TEA?
Which classes are which classes are specifically required?
Well, certain children were allowed to take classes starting their freshman year. And they were using it, I guess it's a key class, but a little off-campus course, which I thought we had a close campus, it's not off, but these are off-campus courses. And uh I need to, I mean, how are they able to obtain this class coming in if there's no record of any? Because if they if they if it is a state guidance that there is, this availability, it has three steps, it has the principal, it has the superintendent or administrator, which may be the assistant superintendent of education, and it has TEA requirements in order to be able to accept these classes for any of these that uh that have had the had those three requirements.
So if we're talking about a a off-campus substitute for TEA, um I don't have any pressure of that. At Central Office. Those those types of requirements, usually are through the superintendent who approves our central office. Um the process of campus looks at it, makes the recommendation, and then there's a test for oversight. Those courses usually have to be approved for TEA as well. Uh there's usually two different types of courses that make that allowance. There's someone who can be transferred to the Olympics, um for the trials, we do have that from time to time. Um there's the other piece of course, which is if there is something that you don't offer that someone else private uh instructor offer, that private instructor has to verify and has to through some we have to have some type of approval, check the hours, courses, the records, and okay, we sign off that this is a a course that is up to for the classes. So this needs this requirement, we hold this requirement to be valid, but we need to have an off-campus.
Someone taking or getting credit for seven periods versus someone taking eight periods, does it create an unfair advantage by taking these courses that are unwaived?
So like most of this, if you can, if you are, if you have more room, if you are a student that is buying for accomplishment or value terms, or something along those lines, um you would benefit by having more weighted courses down to four thirty. You would want to eliminate any vocal rights, unwaived courses to count for the GPA calculation. Uh that would, that's essentially reduce your denominator, you have to calculate out GPA. So your weighted courses is the one three scale or the one hundred scale for your unwaived courses. So if you don't add those courses, apart from the equation, yes, that that helps you. If not, you have more weighted courses within the calculation than in the GPA. If that makes sense.
I've had a certain parents reach out to me and uh asked about the twenty twenty one school year. Would that have changed anything in the top ten? Being that uh there was a student that used these off-campus courses? Was there a disadvantage in final calculations?
To say it would change the top ten, I I don't know if it would affect the one. Isn't it a manage it because you have less courses calculated to your overall.
Would it change the top three?
If one of those three teams had less in the denominator going to their calculation, yes, would. By the simple fact that you have less unwaived courses.
Doctor, when did these concerns become available? When were when did these concerns pop up?
About a week and a half before graduation.
And you did certify, congratulations.
I did. I'm sorry.
You found it before the students certified.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the concerns that came up a week or week and a half prior to graduation, where did those concerns go?
Uh I thought so when I got the concerns from students and staffers, um I investigated. And then once I realized that there was some physical GPA issues, I consulted legal and followed that with a suggestion.
So it never came to the board?
Right.
But now I got to.
Well, if we start at campus level, but I'm gonna show how. If you could resolve without the actual previous being filed or if there's someone willing to have a conversation about moving forward without a previous agreement, we do it.
But if it was resolved, why is it turned out?
I didn't.
So if it was resolved, why is it turned out?
How is it resolved? Do you think that's fair?
No, I don't think it's fair, I think we need to adjust the policy.
We we have we have said on the board many a times that we want to be transparent. This is transparency.
We are.
Well, in the public, in the community members and the parents and the children that were affected, you want to see transparency.
If they were children affected and should have an address prior to graduation.
Well, there was that question for Dr. Anderson. What is the duration that we're talking, is it a one-year course or is it a two-year course?
Which course we talked about?
This that could affect this non-weighted or weighted GPA margin. Was it approved once, twice, three times, ten times?
Um the times that I can that I can see are four years.
For four years, so if it comes to you a week before graduation, obviously, that could very little time. And to the research. So so as it as it comes to this conversation here, um we obviously have have students that will be in their senior year, this year, junior sophomore year. And is is there an is there another course, another another student in law? Is there a horse in the law? Is another student's law small? I mean, you said it should be on your schedule.
Um yes, we have.
There are no reasons it could occur. And without occurrence, sorry, whenever we stop today, she thought that student is already in our system. That's an that's an in-system student that that has already, I guess you'd say, benefit from this process because now you have to begin on four. Of course, you're gonna have four, not four here, you're gonna have two here. Obviously, they aren't going to count for this on this on this equation.
I can't play out what students say. Yes, he has that.
So she so so let's say, I'm gonna use my daughter. So my daughter, she took a course and she took it her sophomore or junior year. And this incident occurred, she stops. We're still going to count her GPA from her junior senior year, maybe add a course to it, her sophomore or junior year, we're gonna eliminate from her freshman year to sophomore year, we're gonna eliminate the possibility of a grade four average. That grade four average will be affected because there's two years prior to her entrance. With only explaining to the board that if you're going to choose, I don't have daughters with this.
Okay, can you ask that?
So if my daughter is in this in this program, and she took it and she was accepted and then she she gets approved to take the special course schedule. And but this indication occurs and we could have stopped today. What happens to the to the two prior years of her education? What is her standing? Is she standing with this course in effect? Or do we now have her take the course to her next season, just to double up or maybe give up? Or give up an extra period of the curriculum?
Yeah, that's I've not ever seen where you retroactive the effect, because we're already in our, I think, that's a slippery slope.
So so then my daughter, my daughter. So then my daughter, what then at that point, have these two courses? You can see, because it was okay at that particular moment. But then her junior year, she has to add this course into her fifth. Is that correct?
Can I speak?
Yes, you may.
No. I thought this was important.
I thought we just said.
It's a children's item and by the Irish they legislate.
It's a child. It's a bigger progress.
It's a legitimate making statement or legislation.
Can we also flash her questions?
Chapter seventy-five is the graduation requirements. And the school boards must approve it legally. And the wording on chapter seventy-five, I mean, chapter seventy-four, graduation requirement allows students to take P credit in a variety of ways. And one credit is required for graduation. But students can have up to four, no more than four, which can be athletics for four years. One is P E. One is P E and the other is, the other three are electives. But for graduation, they need the P E. Some students don't take regular P E, they take athletics. Some students will take band for the first year of P E, and then it's fine arts. A student has two choices out of district courses. One, the one you're referring to, if it is an Olympic-type sport, it must be approved by superintendents every so often. And then there's forms that must be signed by, let's say it's an equestrian event, by the organization that is training that student. That student must attend something like, I don't know, a hundred hours. And most of our kids have more than a hundred hours that have done it. But it's not just equestrian. Every year, we have students taking this, gymnastics is an example. We've had a student for three years took gymnastics. The eighth period said P E. There's no grade, there's no G P A. The student leaves by statute, by approval. They go, they do their thing. Every six weeks, they must bring documents that are signed by the instructor. It goes into their Q folder. All of this has been approved. The student has a period, one is that course they leave to do that activity. It's just one credit each time, no G P A is accounted for that.
And that doesn't create an unfair advantage for me to go play there. And I'm asking, who were the approvals for these kids?
It must be, it must be a principal, the parent, and the entity that is doing the training. The other approval is, I think, every three years or so comes from the administration office. And as far as an advantage or disadvantage, as a counselor, I know you're always a counselor before I took the job I had. Parented students would always ask, does it hurt if I have less classes than someone else? The answer is a grade. So if you have six classes and I have eight classes, and you make a hundred and I make a hundred, the factor didn't matter, it's if you made a ninety-seven and I made a hundred. The weight always helps students. But I've seen students make an eighty-nine in a weighted class, which is a ninety-nine. I'm in a regular class, I make a hundred, I just beat you. So it all comes down to a student's performance. What they do with the classroom. I've had students that have more courses than others and have a lower G P A, have more weight than others, can have a lower G P A. It just depends on the student's grades.
So if it's a non-weighted class, it doesn't matter anyways, it's a secret, right?
Yes, it's just, it's just whatever. If it's a, if it's a regular course, like I choose, I have choices for U S history. If that's an example, either regular, A P, or college. I, as a student and as a parent, can choose which three do I want. Two are weighted, one is not. Let's say I'm a math student, my choice is Algebra One or Pre-A P. I'm a Latin math student, okay? So I'm not gonna take Pre-A P. And my friend over here took Pre-A P. He made an eighty-seven in Pre-A P. I paid a hundred. So that weight became a ninety-seven to my hundred because I know that Pre-A P was hard for me. But on the regular side, I'm gonna do everything I can to get the higher grade. So I have the same opportunity that anyone else has to get the highest grade. So it's all a numbers game.
So let me ask you. If it's that simple, why would these kids be taking A P classes? Why would they be getting loads of weighted classes? If all they have to do is take seven classes or six, like you're saying, to the hundred? These smart kids?
The difference is, if I take no weight and you take weight, you make a hundred, I make a hundred. Do that twenty points to every course, so you have advantage.
But the capital, you have to divide that by different factors. You can't just divide it by eight or seven or seven.
I mean, divided by however many factors. But the factors can be for you and against you. I've seen it both ways.
So if the factors are equal, well, can't be equal if you don't take the same amount of weighted classes, but.
It's the G P A that's the difference, yes. And to answer.
You're knocking your head in the door. The calculations, it's not gonna change. If all the classes don't go into the calculation at all, we have the same, we have the same number of points in our number reader. But I have less, have less classes going in my calculation. I have my state calculation overall, my pass test, those don't go into the calculation, those are striped. Who would have advantage?
Well, it depends on the grade. And that, yes, any time, any time you divide, yes, you're.
When I'm about to see a kid with a margin, it's very slim. In my certain category, that's where I think there's.
Okay, so then on the other hand, let's say I took the courses and my G P A still beat you because I took the courses to the other end of it. But by all they can do it, by T E A graduation requirements, they can do that. They can take that before. Now, can it be changed on the local side, just to only have one? I don't know, you know, the required one, and then don't use the other three. But you can't go back and take away anybody else. It has to start, I think, you know, with the next cohort, which would be the administrators. And then you follow.
I agree with all of what you're saying, but the calculation, the way you're saying it, it's not the way it is when we put weight and points and all this stuff. Because then there would be no advantage to taking these higher classes.
Can I tell you the advantage? And this is, and this is, and this is, that's it, apologies are the ones. So that's the reason why. And a lot of kids, I can tell you they take weighted courses, they don't really care for it. They're chasing the grade. So you can go all kinds of different ways with this merit, fair enough.
But if we're gonna talk, you know, it's an apples and apples business. If a student knows that they can graduate number one by just getting those hundred and ten points across the board, they're gonna try to take as less as they can to come out clear anyway because they're gonna go advantage to taking all these other weighted classes. That's what I'm saying. So as long as they get to point eight, that's all that you have because, like you said, it's the grade. If they're number one, they're number one, any college will cap it anyway. But that's not the way to do it.
That may be true, but as a high school counselor, if I have a student that said they wanna be an engineer, I'm gonna push them to take a course to do that. But it's a family decision when they do that, yes. But if you have the potential to change that, which I don't know, then you can do that. I was just trying to explain why the student has been doing it.
So you agree with the fact that we need to change it to what's P E A tomorrow?
Oh, I'm not gonna jump into that one. I'm just saying, I'm just saying that that's something. Yes, but I answered you. That I think is what we need to look at. It's a big problem, and you can have a solution to work, and then, yes.
Well, you can be a navigator, you can help me. So can maybe correctly remember what I was here with. When I was in high school, I took, well, we were going to have a grade year system. And all grade years, we took, I took football. And every year, I had a grade, I had a number. So when you're, if you have a new name, that number grade, it's only counted. So it's part of my way.
The state law says that a student can take up to four credits of P E or athletics or any combination under statute. So all of those would count except for the one that it's the non, then that doesn't count.
I had a job with me in gymnastics. I kept that shit a lot of times. So.
Exactly right.
But it wouldn't count, it checks me because I don't get a number grade.
Correct. You're gonna, even if they gave a number, even if they gave a number grade, it's posted as past, they, and a credit only, and it's not counted.
One of the things that you were talking, your mispronounced is that by allowing this, the imperative of paying a signature for not requiring, that's my biggest problem. If they didn't look at the right challenge and nobody pays.
I agree with you.
I don't, they're going to sue you, and they're going to sue you for this.
And I agree with you. But as far as I know, that was.
We all don't have any answer from beginning to end. If this, if this person's taking a P course, then it should be given a number grade that it can count. Just like all the other P courses we will take here. I'm gonna go back to this, if they were close campus, these kids can get off-campus going through. And for many years, parent marking, their parents didn't know this. Our kids are doing everything they can. So why don't we, that's gonna go off? And have responsibility to nobody off-campus as a district or a course, or we're backing up. I mean, if they're like, don't be off-campus. These children, well, probably have all their kids here. They need football, they need chairs, wherever they're in, they're off-campus and they're protected from our policy.
And it's my understanding that this, or this, might be what I'm hoping. There is a waiver that the parent must sign that waives the school any responsibility. It is the parent's responsibility because it is off-campus. And by regulation, they can take it off-campus. Now, if you chose to say, we want a grade, you can do that. It was more policy not to do the grade. So if that student is in gymnastics, because we don't have a gymnastics team. If we didn't have a swimming program, the student can do swimming and get the P credit all four years. Now, if you want an outside person to be the grade, they can.
If you have an F A and they're about four H. And they're, I mean, see, that's why I'm not understanding the situation. We approve the four H twos to be part of our system. If we have an F A, we have one, we do. Although it's one, you got the wrong one, you have one. So what you're saying is, if you're off of the board, again, you cannot take this off.
No, I'm saying that in the regulations for chapter seventy-five, the student has the option of taking a course outside the school system. If that wasn't in place, this wouldn't be happening.
And this would be in the school.
No, I was just making an example of a friend of mine that is at a school that trends. So that student, instead of regular P E, goes to swimming and gets their P E credit for credit, not for a grade, but they now have to take P E during the school day.
But it's not a weighted class.
Nothing weighted. None of those. Correct.
But it's what I was saying. It's back to the front. What I just noticed, what I've seen, is that if you're offering these course schedules, there are the opportunities you can take from here. What else is it that we have to act and restrict everything in itself? And we don't like, my problem with this is that who approves the course? I don't understand that.
It's not the course, it is, it is.
We have the training.
It is, yes, the problem is.
Government's off, no master's degree, no day.
It should be, it should be a course code to be, like every other course.
There is, there is a course code by.
Is it a general code to?
No, it's a state, it's a state code. It says non-P E, there's a certain number, it's on the transcript, and that is by T E A codes.
So what you're saying is, this is in policy, local and legal?
Yes. So the only way to change it is if, if you, if you only allow the one required state P E and you can by, need a local say, that's all we're gonna allow. And you can, I don't know if that can be done.
Yeah, it's local and legal state required.
Just state is an option.
Why is it an authorized, where is it a public option?
When, 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 when the counselors meet with, when the counselors meet with the students, they go over all the different ways to get a P credit. Kids will say, well, can I do it if I have band? Yes. Then they tell them about the option of a private or public way to get the credit. Then every year, they offer a parent night. And that parent night, we take the same information, we go over it again, we go over it with the parent. We ask the kid, we print a book for every single student to take home, and then we invite them to come to the parent nights. Now, with COVID, they did Zoom things. And the counselors worked their tail off getting all these Zoom meetings with all the different grade levels. I can talk to a kid about something, for example, I get the T S I. And I sit there for twenty minutes, telling the student what the scores are, I interpret them. And I tell them, okay, you need to retest this, you, I can substitute this. I write it down, I hand it to them. And then the parent will say, how'd you do? I don't know. And the parent then calls and says, what do I do? You just gave the paper. And I sit there and I tell him, because I know his parent. I go, oh, my kid didn't tell me that. So, you know, it's frustrating sometimes. But the effort is made to tell every student that that is an option. And sometimes the parents are the ones that ask, but my kid really likes this. Is there a way, is there another way P E? I don't wanna change clothes, I don't wanna take showers, is there another way you can get P E? So then we also can answer that. There were times that the exact chapter seventy-four was in there. I don't know because I'm not been in that area of the test.
When was the last time you saw that? In the chapter seventy-four?
Yesterday?
No, no, as far as.
But chap, chapter seventy-four.
Yeah, but in our curriculum or our act books.
I don't know because I haven't been in a catalog in that, in that sense.
So it's not, I mean, luckily for none.
It's been there in the past, I don't know what it's like. But it is, but it is in policy.
But I, I, it isn't in our handbook that, I mean, the only places that I, that's how I can correct you.
We have our course catalogs, we have our student manuals, we have.
You know, these off-campus courses are new.
So correspondence off-campus of credit by exam, what they take outside the school, they're not in credit. There's bullets of the coursework of.
And is there procedures to be allowed to have these classes?
No, that's, that's part of the how to be, how to respond. So I guess my question is, how many students are taking this class? If that's a big group or a, how many students know about? How many students are, to see if it's, we gotta figure out where is the. To see if it's, we gotta figure out where is the... So I'm saying that every teacher is connected to what the policy...
Through the years, to my knowledge, there's only been one to three students a year. And I've been up here there about two years. There's at least been one student lost every year. But sometimes it's only for one or two years, sometimes they can manage a four-year option.
So is there a ministry principal? Do I have to address this year?
I guess I would. I would be glad.
Okay, so as a municipal principal, if you have an A three group coming up.
I'll, I'll...
I'm sorry. So as a municipal principal, it is handbook for all these rules and regulations and all the board policies. Are you instructing the A three class, hey, listen actually, you know, don't worry about changing your clothes, son. You never have to... Actually, I wanted to warn you that the community members behind you are not gonna take it or not.
Yeah.
I'll tell them that very soon.
That's what he said, that's what he said, that's...
But that's a class in school, in school class. So asking you, on parent night, how long's your current degree hold? Because guys, I don't need to know. We got three hundred and twenty kids listening to the parent. How many of them are high school and talking to each other?
I'll talk about this. What I've been hearing is it sounds like the system needs to be improved. That's like what you said you did with the last district.
Improve, I said consensus. It gives us between consensus of what is best.
Okay, well then consensus. So that would probably be the good path forward, you think?
Oh, I mean, yeah, absolutely. We always should be looking, looking to see, all right, there are things that need to be clarified. And in every part of the policy. That's right.
So is there any clarification of the curriculum? Is the involvement now today, sir, in all working together? Again, compared to getting all the proper signatures? What are the, what is your process for it in the curriculum?
So... We have to have a third, we, we, that has to be a lot of the process. So what are our parents' feelings and are they taking things just waiting for like? And everybody feel like this is, is it a negative system that has to show? If it is great, it's not fair, this has to be like a more ethical or like clear for...
So this prism maybe is, is it a faulty principle? From what you see, I mean... Because that's what I'm trying to get at. I want you to know, I just want it to be fair across the board. I mean, if one kid knows about it, all kids should know about it. Not, hey, you don't, you gotta go look for it, you gotta dig for it, you gotta, you know, call your parents and...
Thank you for saying so. As a parent of the procedure, it's like you're like, thank you for saying that.
So, I mean, that's really very important.
My daughters have close ties to those that work at my family. But I will say that even with all of this, they were done and they've known about this for many years. And one, and I won't say it because she went in particular way every year to talk about that same issue that y'all were talking about, that PE credit. It was not my daughter, but it was somebody very close to her. And she was told, you know, every single time, and she, every single time for her graduation rehearsal.
Could you please come up to the podium please, if you have something to say?
So, so you, you just didn't like?
I was not to like.
Oh, not you.
My daughter was seeing her next year. And I will say to very close with these individuals, everybody keeps talking to them. And I'm not going to name their names, I don't have permission to do so. But I will say they walked away from this graduation as I'm done and I don't want, I don't want to talk about it anymore because this graduating class, they were, they were very motivated. They were tenacious and they were watching the numbers, like you were talking about. They're watching, they're doing the numbers game. They were from freshman year, you know, they were looking at their course catalogs. My daughter's made every single course catalog the last four years. I wish you could bring it here tonight so y'all could see what was actually in it. But they are so done with this because, and they walk away, this was disappointing. They walk away with, it's not gonna change and they're not gonna change. They all knew about it, they all knew who was doing what, and it's not gonna change. And no matter how much I tried to talk about it with them, how, you know, they needed their own, you know, they needed, you know, motivating themselves to talk about what's happening and the rights and the wrongs. They're just so done and they've had a horrific year in twenty twenty, or twenty twenty into twenty twenty-one. And there were so many things that they didn't get to do this year. It was very disappointing and y'all talked about social emotional aspects and addressing that. I think this graduating class, they had so many things to deal with. And then to end the year with something like this, when it came down to the wire and these girls all know each other, you know, they're all friends. And they, but they're, they're, they're gonna do well, they really are. But they really went and went to try to advocate for themselves every year since freshman year about this thing issues that y'all were talking about. And she was denied every single time. And everything was told, there was nothing we could do about it now. So that's unfortunate for her that she's moving on. And it's, and I think the consensus for those individuals is that it will be changed for the people coming up. There's nothing that can be done for them now. One person probably will be lost out on maybe scholarship, but, you know, that's tens of thousands of dollars for your first year of college. And it doesn't matter where you come from, I mean, that's a, you know, that's a blessing, right? But that was, you, you lose out on that. But this, of course, they're all moving on. They would like to see changes for the, for, you know, the next class coming in. That particular class y'all were talking about, I remember reading in the course catalog that it says that we stress and we advocate for a variety of activities. But if you, but it sounds like to me, and I'm just a parent, but if you continue just to stick with one for all four years, you're not really, you're not really encouraging a variety of activities. I think the way the point reads is to encourage a variety of activities so that you will be a lifelong participant in athletics and or something along those lines. But if you're sticking with one and I realize that that is a passion or a hobby, you're not really bringing it to the course description of a variety of activities. And I'm assuming, I'm not sure, but maybe that's a place to notice that you can take it from one year so that you could explore different activities and certainly with that. I'm not sure how, what the, you know, what they wanted to do when they, you know, be able to be part of that person. But I will say the consensus is to please change it. It certainly, it ended, you know, awful for this graduating class. They've already been through an atmosphere and, and, and last year too. I think if y'all sat there during graduation, some, some of you did, they all talked about all the things that they had to endure over the last four years. I think that's a common thing, you know, how they endured, how they endured. And once again, they endured at the very last moment to begin date of our graduation. They still were hit with this, you know, with the news. So they're, they're moving on, these kids are resilient and I'm glad they're resilient. But yes, please change policy. It's within your power. I think one of your statements as far as the board at the beginning of this agenda is, you know, you're promoting lifelong learners with integrity, right? So please exercise your integrity because this has been a concern. And it's been quite a concern among the kids because they've been so disappointed to take it to somebody. And they're just like, why? They're not gonna listen. Nothing's going to change. And I think y'all were sitting in some pretty good seats where you have the capability to change that mindset for these kids and to change this kind of thing. And this is for, you talked about an opportunity for all of this and I think you're right. I think, you know, what the policies we're making are for all the children, for all of them, wherever they come from, whatever they decide to. So please keep that in mind when y'all, you know, discuss these things.
Well, and change happens somewhere.
Yes, and you have to know that the change is to be made. And we know that there is maybe a change in this we made now and we can move forward and making that change and making this policy more specific. Because that's what I'm hearing, it's more specific and it's being more publicized for this particular credit. And I think that as a district, we can do that and move forward and make the change. So when we talk to these students, let them know that you're gonna work towards making this change and that they were a part of this change. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Yes. I know a lot of things have happened in our district over the last year and a lot of people are unhappy. And there are some people that are saying, thank goodness that somebody finally shed light on something about what's happening. So I think if you don't have a child who's going through it, your perspective is going to be a little bit different. But watching my daughter and her group of friends go through this for four years and then thinking there's nothing I can do about it, it's not gonna take it. I'm gonna take it. And that is not something that you should be promoting for your students that y'all are teaching. That if there is something wrong, they need to be able to stand up for what's, for what's right. And y'all should be encouraging them to do that and to be their own advocate. Because if not, this is what happens. They say, why am I saying, there's nothing that can be done and they've already taken that. So please, you know, when change happens like this, I think it's a good thing that you said and it's an opportunity to see what, where we need to work on and where we can go forward in the future. So I know there's a lot of disappointed people with this on the art district. But I think change is a good thing. And I think these students are changing and their needs are changing and they need to change right now. So please consider that.
Thank you. Thank you. That's much what, most of what everyone's been saying is that it needs to be clarified, modified to fit for everyone else, right? And that kind of the general consensus here gathered, Dr. Fernandez, is that it needs to be clarified toward everyone as an equal access?
Yeah.
That's, that's pretty much, it sounds like what everybody's, and you said it best, let's fix it for the others coming in. That was the best right there. Saying that was the best, fix it. Thank you. Does it need to be any further discussion? Does this work to stay a discussion?
No. I think you can leave all this. I think one of the things that, I think, you need to get back to the fact that maybe is, is having a little bit more time with all the things that they publish, that new law to our students. Having a better understanding. My daughter, when she was seventeen, I haven't seen her handle the course wheel for four years. And unfortunately, you know, as I mentioned earlier, every year we have one or two. I mean, this has been a hard one, this poor one, I've been ever since. It was, is it, it was nothing that's in our policy, we didn't want it local. Um...
I guess I...
You're just gonna say, how often are those policies and procedures?
That's, that's, I'm sorry, we can't discuss that, that's not an agenda item. But we do repeat that. I will tell you that that's, that's not an agenda. I'm, I'm sorry, that's not Dr. Fernandez's position. I mean, if you're asking him this to pause out, I would say, if I didn't know anything and opened up our policy and you're asking, hey, find some off, I would actually define it. So it's either clarity or change or a policy. That, that's just from, if you're trying to find it as a parent, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's kind of a barometer. It's in there, it's clear for parents and students. They didn't hold it well. It's not. You only have exclusion of that and you got some clarity of the problem around, said policy. So I'm not gonna say I agree with what you're saying. I'm struggling to tell my parents, how to run your policy.
Sorry, you got finished before.
What was the policy? I mean, that's what I'm saying, I wouldn't like to go over there and say, is it what the policy is? It's a good, good, good. I think that's, I think that's harder. I think that's harder.
What I'm experiencing is, the board is in the midst here. On the, on the parties that are involved in this, in the process of this being, they're actually...
Well, let me ask you this, if you represent the policy, should it be clear enough for our parents to actually figure out where...
That's what you're...
Tell me no, I'm, I'm...
That's, that's what, that's what we've been saying, it needs to be clarified.
Parents, that I'm saying, if you're going to look for policy to find, I would say, please come to all of us to clarify what our handles or course catalogs will be. That's how we're... There's, there's, I think, like, there's work, we can do that.
What you said, it wasn't policy and catalog, what you didn't make it out, so. Yeah. You could back it?
I don't think you can. Can you fire up? I don't know what that is. Just a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, my, my, my question is, our district can never move forward if we stay in the past. And we just said that we are going to address the policy and make it more specific and work towards making things better. We can't keep going backwards. Our district needs to move forward. We have to move forward by working together and by making the policy more specific and more available to everybody. We have to be given the opportunity to move forward. We cannot continue to look into that in the past. We have to move forward.
I agree with you on that, Ms. Blue, but at the same time, it's hard to follow somebody's parents that this just happened. It didn't happen ten years ago, it just happened a few weeks ago. Or families were affected, and like you said, some people might have lost tens and tens of thousands of dollars in scholarship. Isn't that a problem that we kind of want to make sure that doesn't happen again? And I'm not saying we're not moving forward.
But it didn't just happen this year. We, they just stood up and said that we have had one in three students for the last thirty years. So it has happened for the last thirty years.
We haven't been able to identify this for the past four years, much less thirty.
How many are...
Because I asked for that, I asked for that information and as a board member, I am able to ask for that information.
Okay.
And I, excuse me, I also informed Dr. Fernandez, give y'all a copy if y'all want it, of what I was asking for. I'm not trying to hide this. I'm not trying to pick on anybody, I'm not, I'm trying to make things equal for our kids, that's what I'm about to happen. But if you wanna move forward, you have problems, you have to stop it at the bottom of the foundation and start building again. There is things that are, are not fixed yet. We can't move forward till we get some items out of the way so we know not to repeat them and that they won't be accepted. If they are repeated, we're not gonna allow it, that's important. So I'm not trying to hammer away at anybody. I want everything to be equal, but at the same time, it's, that would affect it. But this year, this past year and several years back, but, you know, how do you go to number two, number three, number four, because we don't know where it is, and say, hey, you know what, sorry you lost sixty, eighty, a hundred thousand dollars in scholarship money, but we won't get it right? Yeah, I wanted to tell them that, but it's a little hard. So... That's what I'm saying.
So we all agree, we all agree that something needs to be fixed so that we can move forward and have an equal opportunity, so.
I'm sorry, I thought, Mr....
That's okay, I just wanted to share that you can't find it in board policy. It is listed on the legal and local side and the one here for the board is E by that. Okay? Now, on the course catalog, it does say that you can substitute any physical education course, but the courses listed for what we can substitute it with is not there. Because that's saying you can substitute.
But the list of items is not there.
Correct.
Okay, now, does it take some kind of paperwork? I'm sorry, does it take some kind of paperwork?
Mr. Parteau, could you come to the podium, please?
Well, my question? My question is, in order to take these boxes, my understanding is that we need to state local policy or anything, there has to be forms filled out by the district principal, the administration.
So I, I never had the opportunity to sign any of that, but my predecessor did. Uh, for the multiple years that I was in the last school. Uh, different, I'm happy, I'm like her for the last couple of years. Uh, but what I hear from them has early age thousand, okay? Um, yes, there is a form available to the council office. It requires the program, the outside school program, to sign and say, "We put the expectations for the course." Then it goes to the principal, the council of the principal, then of course the stewardess.
So that should be in our, at, at, if you'll...
Correct. Now, there's no written process. It's just the common practice.
But that should be stored in our admin. I mean, that's for, it has to be...
Yes, you prohibit, that's just like... Courts have, if your child was the one taking the substitution P D, it would be in their, it was, it was beautiful. Okay?
Their... Which was located where?
In the, I think, the campus.
By admin.
How did that?
So, Dr. Fernandez, one of these forms, I mean, you just, in my, in my request, we was to find that out. Were any of these forms filed?
At admin?
Or at, at, what is it?
Um, based on the, the, um, the terms, uh, that, um, um, only one that I found was not signed by, by, by the, uh, the governor. But nobody is, not, no.
So, sir, let me ask, sir, in the early years, did you have a question? What's the answer? Let me ask, so, with, with the council principal, the location?
I'm assuming here, I'm looking here, I'm looking, so... So what happens at early seventh grade, each student has to have a degree plan within their final. What courses or what tracks are they taking through their possible careers? So that figure, if they miss that, has to supplement, which are into the council office. Along with that, would be the C P D first. On the paperwork, instructor, administrator would be required to turn in the paperwork and assistance to make sure that all signatures are...
And if you do observe official graduation, if it's only done at a local level, how does it get approved by the state?
It is approved by the state. It should be, it should be, so every three years, it should be the superintendent who makes it.
We have this issue.
It is a C P D situation.
So you're for looking at the novels, if there is destiny?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm not, I don't want to put y'all in a spot or nothing like this, but, but... In, in your opinion, do you think we could do a lot better in publicizing these things? Are we a little crazy or do you think anybody has...
There's always sort of...
Well, of course.
Of course.
I mean, do you feel that...
I mean, this course to like senior even senior high, or senior year. You only have seven courses to be packed into your, to your G P A as opposed to A. So if you're getting ready to get rid of this P substitution, you might consider that as well. Because that is, that, that would be one of those...
Oh, well, if you're fighting for a top ten decision, these kids don't even go.
Oh, sometimes even to the hundredth degree.
Exactly. That's what I'm trying to get to. That's where he's, he could lay really impossible.
Correct. And that, you know, we do do a job in providing a lot of biotic courses to meet those students' interests. You know, it's a team effort, and obviously, their job, and their course, globally, they're using our...
But it is kind of this complaint here, uh, uh, apparently, that students will not afford the same curriculum as other capable. It's, it's kind of hard to, to hear.
Thank you. Um, so it still boils down to something that needs to be worked on. And it doesn't sound like we're a solid tonight. It'll have to have something looked at and...
This was the last one that would be fixed, and I just wanted to bring to the public attention our attention.
Yeah, everybody's, everybody's on the same page. It needs to be approved. It needs to be looked at. It needs to be the community, parents, students, staff, administrators involved. So, is there any further discussion, questions for me? Okay, we move to item eight.
So I made a, a request from board members and the administration or myself. Do not have anything to do with this or can comment on this, just to say it would matter. And we'll request, yes, zero, no addition, okay? But I would be prepared to present this, 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 this.
Mr. President, have a question. Is I can move to closed session?
Okay, Mr. Hushery. Uh, the vote can be in closed meeting as authorized by Texas Open Community Act. Texas Governor Pro 1051 for possible. It is for, it's issued in conservative 551.074. Close session, I don't, requires actually, for J. Texas Act, we probably be an open session. 1.102, certified, I think that is closed session would maintain. Uh, 1.103, Adams and Post, which closes cards with the law. It is, in, in, begin, by late June, fourteen, we have a very closed session.
Um, Ms. Blue, does, does this have a second, first rule, desire of...
No.
Close session?
No.
It does not?
I know it is not. We will go back to open session. It is ten forty-one, June fourteen, two thousand and one. We're back in open session. There's no action from closed session. That closed session. We have this, I don't, now. We wait, I think it's back, we can't proceed. Now, it's too short.
Well, we can't hear it. I'm under call.
Yeah, I know, sir.
I'm sorry.
I said, "We're waiting on Mr. Landy." If, uh, if he does not show up here shortly, we're already back in open session. So, we're gonna go on. I think it's seated. We'll continue with the consent and gender discussion, actually.
Dr. Fernandez?
Uh, yes, sir. It is the administration recommendations board trustee's approved the consent, the gender items as...
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you, Dr. Fernandez. Do we have a motion or administrative recommendation, please? Jan, we have a motion here. We have a second, please. I see Kim down there. Okay, any comments, questions?
I have just one comment, too. I want to, I want to, like, you know, because, you know, you've been telling me this for a while. Uh, he's actually, uh, I'm busy saying, I'm need for certain days, not, uh, the D P A.